From the National Institute of Aging. And I know you've been working with this booklet here, Exercise and Physical Activity.
I've filled out every square.
Great, so we have the worksheets in the back of the booklet. I'm just gonna turn to those. We have the Weekly Exercise and Physical Activity Plan, an Activity Log, a Goal Setting Worksheet. So you're filling these out.
I filled it all out.
And then before you know it, you're gonna be back and going stronger than ever.
I never resolved that I am going to do it all. I'm going to be walking the steps more than I have been, and I'll be doing the other exercises. And I'm looking forward to doing it, and getting my air back in better shape, and dancing again.
All right, all right, getting dancing again, I like that. So you had a setback, and then you got some information, and you thought about the importance of exercise. You got a resource, you developed a plan, and now it's time to just keep executing your plan.
That's what I intended.
And before you know it, we'll be dancing again.
Good.
All right.
I'm staying active every day. I'm taking charge of my health.
And I'm here with a very special guest, Mari Coe Van Kampen. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So tell me, you're here at this brand-new wellness center, and staying active. I know you're already very active, so tell me about physical activity, exercise.
Well, I'm a very lazy person.
Okay.
I grew up in Hawaii, and my girlfriends were out surfing, and I was the beach bunny.
All right.
So, you know, it's a challenge for me to make myself exercise, but I have been much more conscientious about it over the last three years, because I just know that I need to. And I go to a couple of classes that I'm very religious about. I have to be, or else I won't go. And I take a belly dancing class. It's Belly Funk, so it's kind of mild aerobics, belly dancing, and core strengthening.
So before you go on there, that's great. I think that already you're hitting such an important point, that, you know, a lot of us, just if we don't have a plan, specific plan, and some kind of accountability, and for you, it's going to classes. For some people, it's having an exercise buddy. For some people, it's having a routine, a certain time of the day, where they have it scheduled in their day, just like an important meeting or a family event.
Yes.
And, you know, so you said, "Look, I'm honest with myself. I'm naturally a little on the lazy side." You like lazing around on the beach, as opposed to being out there with the surfers. But you've realized physical activity is really important, and so you have this plan. So you were telling us, okay, so you do a Belly Funk class?
Yes, and it's followed by a gentle stretch, which is basically a beginning yoga class.
Oh, perfect.
And for me, it's the perfect combination. And I go twice a week, could be more, but my partner, my exercise partner, is my dog.
Oh.
So I do religiously walk my dog. Unfortunately, he's getting old, so he's slowing down a bit.
Oh, no.
But that keeps me, at least with a very, you know, with some daily minimal activity.
So that way, you get something, because you're walking the dog, you're going to the classes. And then I understand that within this context, this booklet has helped you kind of track that level of activity.
I looked through it recently, in preparation to...
So we have this booklet, Exercise and Physical Activity.
And I was very interested to know, in going through all the, excuse me, the individual exercises, that pretty much all of them, I would say 98% of them, are covered in one way or another in the two classes that I go to. And that was very reassuring, because I have great trust in my teachers. They're both fantastic. But it was nice to have an outside perspective, and be able to look at this and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing this, and I'm doing this, and I'm doing this." And the one thing that I haven't done specifically, that's not specifically addressed in the two classes that I'm going to, is weights.
Okay.
And I know for women of a certain age, osteoporosis becomes a factor. So that's something now I'm gonna try to actually add into my weekly schedule, because one of my teachers does have a weight class. And so, you know, it's been a wonderful touchstone for me.
Right, so that way, you get a balance of the endurance, the weight, the resistance, you know, all these...
The stretch.
Stretch, right. So you get, with the belly and the yoga, you get the stretch, endurance, all in one thing. But then you add little activities here and there, you add the walking, the dog, and now you want to add specifically some weight training.
Yes, because I know that that's really important.
Right, of course, that's important. Pretty much everybody could benefit from that. And so it's interesting that you've been able to use this booklet, first of all, to see, it was reassuring that you see these photos of exercises in there, and you say, "Hey, I'm doing that." So even somebody already says, "Oh, I'm doing all this stuff," could benefit from kind of double-checking.
Yes.
Yeah. You mentioned something else really interesting. You said that you trust your exercise instructor very much.
Yes.
How long have you been working with them?
Well, the stretch teacher I've actually been with for eight years, because I had a yoga class in my living room. I didn't organize it.
Wow.
I have a large living room, so it was a neighborhood yoga class. And this woman came in. And then when that finally dissolved after several years, she teaches at the Hollywood Y, and that's somewhere near me, so I followed her.
So that's perfect. So, and there's something about that in this booklet as well, that if you're looking for an instructor or a personal trainer, because that could help in a lot of people's cases, and for a lot of us, I know that if I don't have somebody, an exercise buddy or an exercise instructor, somebody to kind of keep me accountable, make sure that I'm going, I kind of can fall off every once in a while, just like you were saying.
I've been with her for so long that she knows me.
Right.
She can tailor, even within the class structure, if I'm having a particular problem on a particular day, she can suggest a variation.
So you trust her, and she knows you.
Yes.
And for those of you watching at home, some guidelines from the booklet would be seeing if the person has some kind of certification, asking how long they've been doing what they've been doing, finding out if they've been working with people your age, particularly if you're elderly, particularly frail. Some people have expertise in that area. And again, I mean, I think that's great that you've been doing that, and that you're gonna be doing more. And it's great to have you, where we're talking about what we can do to live longer, and live better, and full vitality, and thank you so much. And for those of you watching at home, you can call the number below and order copies of this wonderful booklet, and we'd love to hear from you. Let us know. Give us a ring.
What I'd like you to know, if you're gonna adopt an animal from Los Angeles Animal Services, is that that companion animal is going to be spayed or neutered before you take her home, or him home. We're also going, will have given the vaccines that are appropriate up to that age. So you'll come with an animal, and you'll get a free vet certificate to go for a vet check with one of our local licensed veterinarians, to make sure everything is A-OK with your companion animal. So those things are all included. Also, for seniors, there are fee reductions for seniors who have income levels that qualify. So there's a number that's rolling across your screen, and that's the number that you call to find out more of the details. We have reduced adoption fees. In some circumstances, you can even get a free dog license. So call us, come on down. We've got love just waiting for you.
So if an emergency happens, are you prepared? Do you know who to call? Do you have a meeting place? An emergency can happen at any time. You need to be ready. A family's a team. So take a few minutes and put a family emergency communications plan together as a team. Check out labt.org for all the info. Just be ready, prepare together. All right, let's go, come on! This ball is not gonna play itself.
It's my job to teach you the safe way to ride a bike. You should always wear a helmet, just in case you fall. Ride the sidewalk, it's safer than the street.
Okay.
When crossing a driveway, stop your bike and look both ways.
Like this?
That's good. And obey all traffic laws.
Traffic laws?
Yep, like stopping at stop zones and walking your bike across the street.
Boy, I'm glad you're my big brother.
I know.
Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Today, we're gonna talk about planning before a crisis. It's important to understand what plans should take place before a crisis occurs. Things that need to be taken into consideration include cultural or generational differences, beliefs, values, unspoken topics. Decisions need to be made about medical, legal, and family issues. It's important to talk about the wishes of individuals before a crisis occurs, about their care and their medical treatment, not just what the family prefers, or what the family thinks the person may want. Then, respect those wishes, because those wishes are important to the individual. Remember, people have the right to be in control of the quality of their life, understand the purpose of their treatment. They have the right to dignity and respect, comfort, which is physical, emotional, and spiritual. They may want to laugh, or be angry, or be sad, all interchangeable at random times, even if it doesn't make sense to others. They also have the right to have the truth. So what are some actions a person needs to take before a crisis? Well, there's advance directives, which are the legal instructions given by individuals specifying what actions should be taken in the event that they are no longer able to make decisions due to illness or incapacity. Advance directive forms can be downloaded from the internet. Some doctor's offices have them. Legal services have them also. Some community-based organizations have them. Once completed, it's a good idea to give your primary physician a copy for their records. Talk to your loved ones while they're in good condition and good health, and then respect their wishes. Make it a point to have your voice heard, even when you can no longer speak for yourself by using an advance directive. It's important to plan before a crisis.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. And Leslie, we were gonna talk a little bit about the security features of the Code Amber Alert Tag. Can you explain some of those security features?
Yes, I can.
Please.
It's 256 encrypted.
Encrypted information, right.
And as far as identity theft, there, if they find your card, there's nothing that they can do with it, other than get your name.
Right, I understand.
Or your personal, your medical information. The second tier, there's a two-tier to this, where when you go to the website, you could put in, you have your own password, like you would your email or a credit card.
Right.
And you could put in all your personal information. We live in a state that has fires and earthquakes.
Everything you can imagine.
Right. And you could scan in all your policies, policy numbers. Only you have access to it.
Okay, so there's not only the individual security code, you have an individual password.
No passcode, right.
Well, I thought one of the most important features is a first responder, God forbid you're in an emergency room, can, by scanning this or accessing the website, get the pertinent information to maybe save your life.
Yes, yes.
That's a great comfort.
Yes, that's the information that will come up first and only.
Yeah, because so many people, actually, it's hard for me to remember what I'm allergic to, for example. And I love the idea, well, here, we're gonna, we're gonna show people now the information that is contained, but not limited to just these things, with your Code Amber Alert Tag. This is new, but it's such a good idea, it should have been around for ages.
Right.
How did you move this from the concept, and the worries of caring for your mother, into a reality? This had to be like a family undertaking, or engaged a lot of people?
Well, because there is so much on, for children, this is a division of the Code Amber abduction of children.
Right, of course.
And caring, and being passionate about my mother, and seeing what goes on in the hospitals and with the elderly, they need a voice.
Boy, do they ever. Now, while we're on the subject, the website, can you give us the website address? Because I really would like our viewers to check this out. And the website is? Code Amber Alert Tag.
...dot C-O-M slash L-D-R.
Okay, great, great, great. Now, we're gonna have that up on the screen, so we don't have to repeat it endlessly. And when a person goes to the website, even a casual, even if driven by casual interest, they're gonna get some questions that frankly, may be the first time they've addressed them. Do you know who to call in case of an emergency? Do you have your insurance policy number? Who's your medical provider? That stuff is not always at the tip of our tongues.
Right, and you would put that in, so that when it's not at the tip of your tongue, no matter who finds it, the first responses have that information, because they will ask you, "Do you have insurance?"
Of course, yes, they will. Yeah, for those $1,200 ambulance rides.
And I try to encourage the elderly on patient information, which they're now implicating, put your pharmacist.
Yes.
Because their medications change all the time.
Yes, and they may be taking several medications.
They usually are taking several, not just... And you want to make sure they interact with one another. And who better knows this than your pharmacist?
Exactly. Now, you can print this information out, once you've put it into the form, correct?
Absolutely, you could print it out, you could hand it out. I think it will one day replace the patient information form that we all have to fill out at doctor's offices.
Wouldn't that be a wonder?
Yes.
You know, it's funny, having twice now in the last few months visited emergency rooms, it would be a boon not to have to keep filling these things out.
All you'd have to do is show them this card, they pull it up, boom, they have your, all your information.
And Code Amber Alert Tag, it's important that you get that down, because you can access the website. And is this a day-to-day thing with you now, Leslie?
Oh, this is a day-to-day.
Is it taking over your life?
It's taken over my life, and it's cost-effective.
Oh, yes, the cost.
Yes.
I was astonished when you told me the number. Listen to this number.
It's $19.95 plus tax for a year.
A year, a year.
A year.
Not per month, a year.
And it makes a great present. I had my insurance agent buy them as thank-you presents. He sent me a Visa card and said, "Have lunch on me," and I had so much problem with it that he has since found out this makes a great present, and it lasts for a year. The renewal lasts for a year. If they mention that they saw the show, Aging in Los Angeles...
Right.
Their reward will be, we will give them an extra month to that $19.95.
See, there are rewards to being a viewer of Aging Well in L.A. Leslie, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Well, I know it's still painful, the loss of a mom, there's nothing worse, but you've done something positive in her memory.
Yes.
I wish you great luck with this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sign up today.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
And thank you for being with us here on Aging Well in Los Angeles. We'll see you next time.
Why did we close a section of the 405 freeway this weekend? We're not just connecting a system of carpool lanes, it's all part of our plan to give Angelenos the 21st century transportation system they deserve.
This section of the freeway, this HOV lane, will connect a grid of HOV lanes from Orange County all the way through the San Fernando Valley. It'll save us about a minute per mile, and it will complete the HOV lanes that we have in the region. With the work that we're doing on the 10 and the 110 to make hot lanes accelerating and doubling the size of our rail system, all of this is connected to a much bigger plan.
In November of 2008, we passed Measure R. Measure R was a halfpenny sales tax that would double the size of the rail system, make $40 billion of investments over a 30-year period of time in our public transportation system, our highways, our bridges, our roads, signal synchronization, and a panoply of things to really address congestion and gridlock in our county.
We need to connect people to jobs when we create infrastructure.
We came up with an idea that would leverage our money, accelerate our projects. We called it the 30-10 Plan, because this is a 30-year funding plan that we want to compress into a 10-year period of time. We've now taken it national, we're calling it America Fast Forward.
We have, as you know, a bipartisan financing plan that can create nearly a million jobs. It can put people to work today by allowing local governments to creatively leverage local dollars for roads and rail.
We're not asking for a handout. All we're asking for is in advance to help us front-load money to put more people to work today.
And we've already had a down payment on that effort, a $546 million loan from the federal government for the Crenshaw Line, and now an announcement that we're a finalist for a $600 million loan for the subway.
The mayor has done an amazing job of getting bipartisan leadership. We have over 113 Democratic and Republican mayors from across the country that have signed a letter of support for America Fast Forward. Senator Boxer has got a section in her new transportation bill named America Fast Forward, which is huge. And Congressman Mica, on the Republican side, and the House chairman's been very responsive to some of the elements of America Fast Forward, both labor and business, and the environmental community, pretty unique coalition.
We need to say now is the time to put millions of people back to work by making long overdue investments in our future infrastructure needs. We need to pick up the shovels and pick up the pace. We need to tell Congress to press the button on America Fast Forward.
Senator Boxer's Environment Public Works Committee is having a hearing next Thursday. The mayor's going back to testify, as he has several times in the past, to emphasize the importance of enacting infrastructure reform, a transportation bill now, to put people to work now in this country.
I've said I'll fly to Washington day and night, around the clock, whenever I have to, when you look at what's at the end of the rainbow. We want to get the money we need to put people back to work, to double the size of our rail system, to address the congestion and gridlock in the city of Los Angeles.
G'day, Troy McCuvin from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
At the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome those members of the public who are here with us today. Thank you for taking time out of your day to join with us for this meeting. Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by Council Members Jose Uizar, Paul Coretts, Tom LeBonds, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zine, which means that we have eight members. We need 10 to begin the meeting, and we have 14 members of our usually 15-member body, since we have a vacancy in Council District 15. So as soon as we have two more members, we'll begin the meeting officially. If I could call the following council members to come to Council Chambers immediately, it is five minutes after the prescribed hour to begin. Council Member Cardenas is excused today, but otherwise, Council Member Alarcon, Englander, Krikorian, Parks, and Reyes, we are waiting, so if you'll please make your way down as soon as possible, so we can begin the meeting. I want to thank those folks who are also viewing us on Channel 35. Throughout our city's cable system, Channel 35 broadcasts each of these meetings live on the Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays when we meet, also in the evening on those same days. If you're not available to get to a, sorry, a television that has cable, you can always use your computer and listen in through the city's homepage. If you go to lacity.org and click on the links on the left-hand of the page, you can watch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, as well as archived footage of all of our past council meetings for your convenience. Also online is a schedule of our meetings, our committee meetings, our agendas, and all supporting material that council members receive for any items that are before us also are available there online. And finally, if you're not close to a computer or a television, but you would like to listen in using your telephone, you can call the following number to listen to the council meeting and any of our committee meetings. That number's 213-621-CITY, 213-621-CITY, and it's a service called Council Phone, and you can listen in not only to the full council meetings, but our committee meetings as well. And of course, we always welcome you here in person, or if you live closer to our chambers in Van Nuys or San Pedro, you can always testify, or just follow the council from those remote facilities. Save yourself some time and avoid some traffic, reduce some pollution, and be involved with the city council. We have cards available for items that public, members of the public would like to be heard on. For any items that have already had a public hearing in committee, they usually are not heard again here in the full council unless a council member moves to reopen the hearing. But any items that have not yet had a public hearing in a committee, then a card from the public will automatically trigger a public hearing here in council. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comments, which is for items that aren't on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. And you can just fill out a card and put "public comment" in the upper right corner, and we'll be sure to hear you. It's usually two minutes per speaker, sometimes one, depending on our time constraints, but at least most of the time, it is two minutes, and we have a timer to help you guide your comments, and to be able to be as fair and even-handed with everybody as possible. Again, I want to thank those members who are here, Council Members Uizar, Coretts, Krikorian, LeBonds, Perry, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine. We are still awaiting Council Members Alarcon, Englander, Parks, and Reyes. As soon as one of them arrives, we will begin the meeting. We have a very full agenda today. We have 70 items that are before us, 70 items to consider, including three ordinances, which will require 12 members to pass on their first reading, if indeed there is unanimity. And so with that, we will await and hold those until we have 12 members. But in the meantime, if Council Members Alarcon, Englander, Parks, and Reyes will join us. Thank you. Thank you. We now have a quorum. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Uizar, Coretts, Krikorian, LeBonds, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
All right. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Committee resolutions for approval.
All right. Mr. Uizar moves, and Mr. Coretts seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, or sorry, before we do that, it is Tuesday. If we can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance as we salute the flag. And Ms. Perry, would you be kind enough to lead us?
Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can run through today's agenda that is before us, colleagues, if there's items you wish to call special, now would be the time to identify those and call them as we go through the various sections of the agenda. If we can take up the first items, we're still awaiting Council Members Alarcon and Reyes. First items, please.
Item number one is a modification to the historic downtown Los Angeles property and business improvement district notice for public hearing. Council should close the public hearing, and the ballot tabulation will be announced on Tuesday, November 22nd.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 1 through 17 is special. I think there's a move to receive and file number 11. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. I'm sorry, we have one card. We have item four. Let's wait on that.
Mr. President, items for items 2 through 16 are Department of Building and Safety liens, notice for public hearing. There's requests to continue item 5 to December 14th and to continue item 14 to December 6.
Is there any objection to those continuations? Not? Okay.
And also, the department reports that item 11 may be received and filed as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay. Let's go ahead, then. We'll call four special. There is a card on that, so we'll take four off. And then, on the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Parks?
I'd just like for Mr. Rosendahl to reconsider 16 and continue it for one week.
Okay. My apologies. So let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration of 16. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And one week will take us to November 22nd.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, for item number eight, the council file, the agenda shows that it's in Council District 7, and it's actually in Council District 8.
Okay. We'll make the correction, ministerial correction on item number eight. We do have 12 members, so let's move to the next items, which include ordinances.
Items 18 through 38 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. I'd like to call 32 special. Ms. Perry?
I'm good.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to hold 21, 22, 23, and 24 special, so we can get some questions answered.
Okay. 21 through 24 special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll.
President, I guess I do need to call 18 special, because we do need some public comment on it.
Okay, number 18, Ms. Perry will call special. Any other specials, colleagues? We're in 18 through 38. Going once, going twice. If not, let's take up the balance, and please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 39 through 70 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. There's requests to continue item 69 to November 18th.
Okay, without objection, we'll consider those. Continue item 69 till that date, if there's no objection as well. Mr. Parks, and then Mr. Englander.
51.
51. Mr. Parks, Mr. Englander?
55.
55. All right. Mr. Wesson on item number 64. And do we have cards on any of these items? If we do not, we'll close the public hearings on those. Any other specials, colleagues, 39 through 70? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. Those are approved. I believe we have a special one. Okay, it's not yet been distributed? We know that there's a reward motion under our Rule 23 of the council rules. If there is an emergency motion after the posting of the agenda, those can be introduced and voted on the same day. We're waiting for the distribution, though, of that item. We're checking on the status to see whether we take up that first or whether we go to public comment and then come back for that. Mr. LeBonds, introduction in the meantime?
A very special introduction here at the John Farrow Chambers as we meet today. We'd like to recognize the Civil Grand Jury of the County of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury. Please be welcomed by the City of Los Angeles and its council. Thank you for your service. They tour and outreach throughout the county at various facilities and halls of government, and they're getting a tour of the City Hall, the Tom Bradley Tower, and hopefully over to the fire department wing and all the action that goes on in City Hall. Thank you very much for service to the County of Los Angeles.
All right. Thank you, all of you, for your public service. It's great to have you here, and thank you for the interactions and the work that you've done with LA City Government. We appreciate that very much. We do have the reward motion now being circulated. City Attorney, if you'd like to speak to the findings, and then we'll recognize Mr. Rosendahl after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Fire Department has requested that a reward be offered for information leading to the arrest of suspects responsible for the arson fire at 12315 West Gorham Avenue on November 10th at 3:37 a.m. Immediate action is required for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. If there's nobody that wishes to be heard on the findings, let's open the roll pursuant to Rule 23. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Under Rule 23, that is now before us for emergency motion. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues, and I appreciate your support of this motion, Rule 23. As we know, a Rule 23 is something we can put on the agenda if it's urgent and in an emergency nature. Last week, we had a fire in Brentwood, and the fire was on West Gorham Avenue. And when I went to the scene, it was pretty clear from the arson investigation team that this was indeed an arson fire. The amazing coordination between the police department and the fire department was breathtaking for me. In fact, the chief in charge told me that en route to the fire scene, which was at 3:37 in the morning, he got a call from LAPD that had a chopper over the scene and explained to him exactly what was going on. Well, he started pushing various buttons, and 42 fire companies showed up. 160 firefighters were there at 4 o'clock in the morning. And the police also evacuated 123 citizens from the neighborhood that were potentially threatened. When I walked around the structure and I saw, frankly, the front side and the back side of homes that truly would have been destroyed if there weren't such an amount of concerted effort by the Fire Department and also the evacuee program by the LAPD, it was breathtaking. No one was injured. No one died. There were some homes that were truly destroyed, but it was clear it was arson. So I ask for your support for a $50,000 reward to lead to the conviction of the person or persons who did this arsenic thing that could have been significantly tragic for all of us. So I ask for an eye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Let's go ahead and open the roll. On the reward motion, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send that forthwith.
With that today.
Absolutely. We'll send that to the mayor forthwith. We'll now go to our general public comment, and then we'll come back to items called special. Our first speaker is Mr. Lee Glaze. Always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Glaze. We'll see if we can get you a microphone. Hold on two seconds. We've got it for you. It's coming. The sergeant-at-arms will hand it to you, Mr. Glaze. If you want to just come forward a little bit. And then after that will be Sean Murphy. Very good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti, Councilman Garcetti, and ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. First of all, I've had some fantastic dealings with the LAPD. In the past 45 years ago, I had most definitely had differences with them. However, there was a night, the other night, that I had a stomach problem. I was going to CVS, 2:30 in the morning. A couple of cops stopped me, and they said, "Mr. Glaze, where are you going?" I said, "CVS." They had me cross the street, go right down to CVS. He actually came, because he knows I'm legally blind, came into the drugstore and helped me get the, what is it, this Petro Visbo, and took me home. And the Fire Department has literally saved my life twice. Consequently, I need your assistance, and I want to pay, in Long Beach, the Miller Children's Hospital in Long Beach, I volunteered, and I painted dozens of murals all over the place. I'd like to paint murals, maybe in the kitchen, of the Long Beach, the new LAPD Hollywood Division, also the Fire Department, because, I mean, these guys are incredible. Now, I really need somebody's assistance in doing that, if I can.
Sergeant, if I could hear the speaker afterwards, I'll work with you on that.
What?
Go ahead, Mr. Glaze. You still have time. That was just Mr. LeBonds was saying that he would work with you.
He asked for help, and I want to give him help.
Absolutely. We appreciate that. But go ahead. Thank you. And Mr. LeBonds will come talk to you. Thank you, Mr. Glaze. Our next speaker is Sean Murphy. After that will be Cheryl Eickley.
Good morning, City Councilmen.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. I'd like to thank my City Councils in the Valley. We're finally having our street fixed in the valley. Thank you, City Council. Thanks for fixing the streets in the valley. The NBA is on strike, and it's going to be a long one. I wish they would settle. I would like Jesse Jackson to please come talk to the owners of the NBA. We cannot have an NBA strike. It's going to affect everybody. I'm a Laker fan. I'm wearing my Laker shirt under my shirt. So please get, NBA, please get the strike resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Eickley is our next speaker. And thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'd love to see some basketball this year. After that will be Bill Hui.
May I have my full two minutes? Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I live in District 4, and I am a member of Occupy Los Angeles. I speak on behalf of myself. I'm here today to ask for your help. We, as Occupy LA, have adopted a principle of solidarity regarding individual and collective responsibility. I need your help holding some LAPD accountable. It is with a heavy heart I speak to you today. I've been coming to you since before the occupation began at City Hall, and repeatedly my concerns, and expressing my concerns about individuals from the police department abusing their power. First, I spoke before you on September 30th to tell you that the LAPD had threatened to arrest us if we sat, laid, or slept in the park or on the sidewalks surrounding City Hall. Thank you to council members. Those arrests were avoided. I have spoken several times during a general public comment to express my concerns for police brutality and abuse of power that we've seen at a variety of occupation locations. So far, Occupy Los Angeles has had a reasonably decent interaction with LAPD. No major problems to report until now. Yesterday, I was informed of an incident in which one of the occupiers was approached by officers who had quickly pulled up to the curb on Spring Street near the southern porta potties. This occupier had just been using the porta potties and was washing his hands. The officers quickly handcuffed the occupier, put him in the back of a car, rushed off with him in the back. They drove him to a nearby jail, removed him from the vehicle, frisked him, searched him, questioned the occupier. They told him that they saw that he had rolled marijuana joint from afar with binoculars or a camera, but in reality, he was rolling tobacco. He had gathered some discarded butts and emptied the contents into a new rolling paper. I don't believe this warrants probable cause to detain, search, or question him. There, they stated the reasons for detainment was possession of marijuana. It's my understanding that there was no possession of marijuana. He was cited and released, and told if he returned to the occupation, he would be booked. I need your help to hold LAPD officers accountable for this action.
Thank you. Bill Hui is our next speaker. After that will be, in Van Nuys, Herbert Thompson. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the LA City Council, Council President Garcetti. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition, fairhousingcoalition.com. We believe in equality under the law for landlords and renters. I'm here today to make a very important announcement. Over the past two years, I've been coming here before the city council to talk about how the city abuses housing providers, mainly the LHD, Los Angeles Housing Department, through SKEP and REAP program. Well, last month, Judge Jaffe of the Los Angeles Superior Court made a landmark ruling. He basically said that the Los Angeles Housing Department is not following the law and basically acting as a rogue agency. Now, I won't have the time to go over all five points. It'll take more than two minutes. But I have a copy of that ruling for the city attorney that's here. Basically, what he said is the general managers, the president and former general managers are making law. They're making decisions that are not legal. It requires a government body to make these laws, and the way they're conducting these enforcements are a violation of civil rights. This is since 1999. This puts the city vulnerable to a lot of civil rights lawsuits, which the settlements could be $1 billion, because there have been thousands and thousands of landlords who've had their civil rights violated by the way the housing department operates. And this has hurt LA on another level. Many housing providers in LA also own small businesses. When you bankrupt them, when you take their property, LHD's taken their property, it drives these people out of LA. So consequently, poor people lose their home, lose their apartment, and jobs leave in LA. There should be an opportunity for everyone in LA to find a job, to find a place to live. But the people, it's the private sector that creates these opportunities, and when they leave LA, everyone in LA suffers. I recommend the city meet with me on this, and we change how housing does their business, and we get rid of SKEP and REAP, because it's destroying LA. Thank you very much. Can I give us to the officer?
Yeah. The sergeant-at-arms will get that from you. Hold on one second. He's coming right now. Thank you. Herbert Thompson's our next speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning, LA City Council. How you doing? My name is Herbert Thompson, and I'm here just today just to introduce myself. I am a founder and CEO of Victims Fighting Back Community Action. I'm also on the executive board with Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. I'm also co-chair of housing with the NAACP. And today, I'm here just to bring a little awareness to the community that on January 4th, 2012, here in Van Nuys, we are going to have our first outreach program to introduce to the public and also to city officials about the awareness of bipolar disorders and the violence that comes erupting. I'm not attacking anyone with bipolar disorder, but as a diagnosed as bipolar myself, I realize the time bomb that is ticking for those who don't get medication or get proper treatment. Also, I would like someone from the city council to contact me. My name is Herbert Thompson. I'm at HerbertThompson69.com, yahoo.com. Regarding issue of violence that's erupting, just for instance, Mrs. Gifford was shot by someone that was later on found to be, had a disorder and was not held accountable. But we'd like to address this issue, and if anyone at the city council would like to join us with our Stop the Violence campaign, I'm asking that you please contact me, Herbert Thompson, 69, at yahoo.com. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments this morning. Our next speaker is here in council chambers. It's Louis Gallantouomo. After that will be David Van Shany.
Hi, my name is Louis. I'm part of the Fair Housing Coalition. We want to make equality for landlords and renters in the city of LA. There has been a landmark ruling last month. There has been a landmark ruling last month. Basically, the judge told the Los Angeles Housing Department they have no authority whatsoever citing building code. They have absolutely no authority citing building code. That's huge. The past 12 years, Housing Department, all they've done is cite building code. All they've done is put thousands of people into REAP. All they've done is murder, murdered countless, I don't know how many senior citizens who lost their properties. This is a huge, huge court decision. These are the judge's exact words. "The city does not authorize its housing department to use the ministerial provisions of the RSO to force a landlord to comply with the city's building code. The building code is to be enforced by utilizing the enforcement provisions contained in that code." The judge also noted that since December 1st, 1999, LAHD has cited building code based on a memorandum between the housing and building departments. This is the judge's response. "The contention has no merit, because the two general managers who issued the memorandum do not have the authority to repeal or amend a county ordinance duly adopted by the City Council, the legislative body of the city." I mean, I don't know how much bigger this ruling can get. Over the past 12 years, tens of thousands of properties have been placed into REAP, and now this judge pretty much stated the obvious. It's what every housing provider knew the past 12 years. For some reason, the city kept doing it. The city kept citing code that's not even in the law. The Housing Department has no authority doing the business Building and Safety Department's role. That's called corruption. It's called racketeering. It's not, it's not, it's not how cities and municipalities work, and this judge understands it. The Fair Housing Coalition is now actively going to pursue this and seek compensation in the billions, and I'm saying that with a straight face.
Our next speaker is David Van Chaney. After that is Arminak Norjaniyan.
Hi there, I'm David, I'm David Van Chaney. You guys must know me by now. I'm going to share with you a little personal experience I've had. I had a building over in Angelino Heights here that I had, it was a historical building. It took me four years to put together. I did it with permits. And then the Housing Department came and said, "Oh, what a beautiful building. This is amazing." You know, all new French windows. It took forever for the HPOZ to approve my windows. They wouldn't let me do double paint, because they weren't historical. I didn't care. I was trying to comply. Long story short, he goes in the basement and he goes, "Oh, your water heaters are a quarter inch too tall, so you can't, you need to replace them all." So I get cited under your, under the SKEP, and then I have to get permits. And then all the plumbers come out and go, "This thing, well, everything's fine here." I go, "No, actually, it's not. The Housing Department says it's not." And pretty soon, I am in, I've spent like $10,000, I've got new water heaters, and you know, and now, this building, I've been paying on this building for two years. I went through his Chapter 11 bankruptcy, as you all know. I paid for two years to Chase Bank. Now Chase Bank has decided, rather than extend my loan for two more, for, well, for whatever time, they've decided they're going to take the building back. Now, you see, people like me, who have very good tenants, who are very sympathetic to me, do not understand why someone like me has to have, on one side, the city being adversarial, on the other side, banks being adversarial. You guys, this doesn't make any sense. I'm a really good landlord. I sit on the boosters, Rampart boosters, I run good buildings. One of the, one of the SKEP inspectors came out and says, "You should get an award." And I said, "I wish you would tell somebody that." You know, I've had a couple of your, you know, commendations for being a good citizen, which I would like to turn in if I ever can, for a little leniency when you guys bust me the next time. You guys, you're making it impossible. I am a really, really responsible landlord, who really cares about his neighborhoods and really worked hard. And I can't tell you, when I got this notice from Chase, that they refused my money and they're taking my building, come on, you guys, you're making this too hard.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Arminak Norjaniyan is our next speaker. After that is Pauline Ergoyan.
Good morning, City Council members. Dear fellow Angelinos, my name is Arminak Norjaniyan, and I am a liberal Democrat. Actually, I'm a Texas-born liberal and run for the seat of California State Assembly. I promise to unseat reactionary incumbents and to create lots of government subcontractors jobs by raising state taxes 50% against rich individuals and wealthy corporations such as oil and gas exploitation corporations that rip off Californian motorists every day. Also, I will actually create legislation such as state orders to build and launch California satellite satellites, not to create cell phone service and provide surveillance for wide audiences. Those commercial satellite will create complementary computer and cell phone services in rural and forested areas of California, in territorial waters, well-mannered California shops, in order to help explorers, travelers, and, you know, and mostly industrially, agriculture. I will also make same-sex marriage law of land in order to uphold civil rights of homosexuals and lesbians. I promise to give housing construction contracts to create more affordable houses for working-class people with low wages. I promise to raise speed limit on Californian highways and freeways, 20 miles up, 20 miles an hour for light vehicles. I promise to establish a paid leave for six months for all Californian pregnant women to make same-sex marriage, a law of land to uphold human rights of sexual minorities. I promise to build new sanatoriums for substance abusers, as Proposition 56, or Substance Abuse Treatment Act dated July 2001, allows mandatory treatment of substance abusers on court orders. Proposition 19, or legalization of harmful narcotic marijuana, was rejected by 56% of Californian voters, according to MSNBC report. I ask City Council members and politicians to shut down so-called medical marijuana dispensers that rip off Californians by charging gross fees of $200 per ounce of harmful narcotic marijuana. I demand that City Council members make a motion to cancel illegal city ordinance number 181530, with unlawfully legalized narcotic strain of harmful substance marijuana last year, in spite of a failure of Proposition 19, and with, that actually rejected legalization of harmful narcotic marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. Norjaniyan. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Pauline Ergoyan. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys, and we'll hear from Miriam Fogler. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Council. I'm here today to speak about a street repair. I've previously submitted requests, I know how to go about it, to get the street repaired in the past, and it's been over a year now. The city has filled up the street with potholes repairs, but it's still insufficient. The street in particular I'm talking about is a small alley. The Cross Street is Fourth, Fourth Street, and it opens up on Savannah Street, where Lady Antala Church is at, and ends on Camilo Street. Right there, in that area, there are three churches and a school. And it's a small alley, but it receives high, high traffic. There are large buses that go through it, and cars go through it every day, and the street is really bad. When it rains, there are puddles that are unbelievable, and in the past three months, I've received three flat tires. It's also a concern for me, because there's a gentleman who lives in an apartment building complex right there, and he's a blind man, and he's had several falls because of the streets. So I came here today to request that it can be, one, repaired, more than just potholes, and secondly, because it receives such high traffic, if maybe you consider having a street cleaner go by there, because I'll go there and try to sweep it up myself because of all the faults I've received, but it's really neglected.
You said it was Fourth and Savannah? Do you know which council district it's in?
Which district?
Is it Mr. Rezar? Okay. Okay.
We're coming over to speak with you, and unfortunately, the city is not redoing alleys because of funding reasons, but we'll see what we can do to help in that situation, if it's an emergency situation as well. On budget and finance, the last budget season, we've discussed how we could fund redoing alleys. The decision was made, not too collectively, but we're moving forward on having each district have certain amount of money to select the most dangerous alleys in the areas, or the most needed areas in the alleys in the, per district. So we're going to work on that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. My staff is coming to you over here to speak with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Rezar. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, is Miriam Fogler. She'll be followed by her friend Donna Perman.
Well, I don't like the charade that's going on in the city, the politics, that you want to give freebies to rich people. You've got people who are complaining about the banks. Where do you think they get their money from? The rich. Okay? And I'm not trying to blast the rich. There's some things that they're good about, okay? Like Steve, you know, like, you know, Donald Trump does some good things. I'm just saying that they should be paying their fair share taxes. And back in the 50s is when they were paying the most taxes, and the country was prospering. It was the best time of this, best time of the history of this country, because people realize that they have to pay taxes to operate the government. Now, you people think that you can operate a government without the human power? You want to just have robots, so you don't have to pay salaries and, and healthcare and all that? I think you're all in the twilight zone, because there was one such episode that did such a thing, and after he realized that he put all those people out of work, he had no human dignity left. You have no dignity at all for, for all these people who work hard. You know, and you take away the retiree healthcare, and that's not right, to make them pay $200, $300, $400 a month. I think that's an outrage for the middle-class people, taking tax money, this was tax paid. These are private workers, working private money, working for government. Just because they're working for government, they're still the same as a private enterprise. They pay taxes just like the rest of us, folks. And this money could be put into our economy, stimulating our economy. Now, it's going to the city government to fatten it up more, to give freebies to new car dealerships and to, and to the stadium. All the rich people are going to benefit from the retiree healthcare that people are paying for in this city, and I think the 20,000 people should have an outrage to stand up and stop it.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Donna Perman is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Good morning. I'm glad to still see you, as of today, still the president of the City Council. I miss Jan Perry, the president pro tem. I think she's a woman of integrity. And the City Council pretty soon will not be what it is, when we get new people over there, so wake up, people. Jan Perry has already stepped down. Yes, Stephanie Ellis-Bowley's succession. Don't worry, she says things, I don't mind if she says things. And anyway, the City Council will soon not be what it is when Eric Garcia steps down as president of the City Council. Anyway, what I don't like is the middle-class businessman doesn't get any, they don't get any breaks. You don't give any breaks to the middle class. You say you want businesses to come in here, but you don't really worry about giving it over to the middle class, like the man with the apartment. Chase Bank wanted to take it just because, you know, because they wanted it, and after he had to spend all that, had to borrow that money for those heaters that didn't need to be replaced. Anyway, you get breaks to car dealerships, and you gave a great big thing over to the banks, these areas of these rich people, and you want to clean them and only give tax breaks over to the rich people, and I don't like that. Yeah. And giving money to unfair taxation, and I don't like money going with it, you want to try to save the CRA. The CRA will try to do little things and help people here and there, so they won't look like, oh, this time is not working, I don't know how much time have.
Oh, you've got 30 seconds left, sir.
Oh, okay, so I don't like giving all the money over to the CRA. And I, but I also don't want to see Mr. Garcia step down as president of the City Council, because I think still, even though he loves the CRA, I still think he was the best president of the City Council that we've had, a lot better than John Furrow ever was. And so the City Council will not be what it was again when he steps down.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Dr. Tom Williams is our next speaker, here in Council Chambers.
Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council. This afternoon, there will be a committee meeting, and it will consider a very prominent feature in LA 32 Neighborhood Council area. It's called Elephant Hill. It's only one hill, not two. So what we're concerned about is that it gets used by the people. If it requires being sold to another group, fine, as long as the people get to use it someday. So far, after buying it, the city hasn't done very much about it, and we're quite concerned about that. We're also quite concerned about our other parks, the few that we have. Second issue, Occupy LA. In 1966, I started my PhD at Berkeley, California, from 1966 to 78. Do not dislodge them. They are trying to do the best they can with the resources that they have available. Yesterday, I had to explain, based upon my own personal experience, how to deal with tear gas. It's very simple. We got used to it in Berkeley, so we know how to deal with it. But don't relocate them, don't push them out, and especially, don't tear gas them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. That will close our General Public Comment. Mr. Krikorian, I believe, has a brief presentation, and then we'll go back to Items Called Special. Mr. Krikorian.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President. As the Chair of the Arts Parks and Neighborhood Committee, it's a great pleasure for me to recognize a program that brings together art and healthcare, two of the things that we deal with in my committee. And I'd like to take a moment now to recognize some very special guests that we have here today from one of our great healthcare providers in California, Kaiser Permanente. This year, Kaiser is celebrating the 25th anniversary of its award-winning educational theater programs, which provide free health education to people of all ages through the very engaging mechanism of live theater. The Kaiser Educational Theater programs cover a variety of topics that have never been more relevant to our constituents than they are today. Mental and physical health, diet and exercise, adolescent bullying, the challenges that young people deal with at puberty, conflict resolution, HIV and STD prevention, and programs that promote greater literacy as well. This program has helped 10 million people throughout California to be well and thrive, as they've been inspired to make healthy choices in their lives and build stronger, healthier communities. So I'd like to introduce and ask to come to my desk Angela Corone, the Managing Director of Community Benefits, who will introduce her colleagues from Kaiser Permanente as well. Angela, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Council members. On behalf of Kaiser Permanente, I'd like to thank Council members Krikorian and Cardenas for this resolution recognizing Kaiser Permanente's educational theater program for its, our 25 years of service to the city of Los Angeles. In 1985, a team from Kaiser Permanente Southern California Public Affairs developed an idea for a health promotion and wellness education community service project, and that's where educational theater was born. This is our 25th anniversary. What started out as a single program has become a robust, diverse forum for addressing health and wellness issues with children in a context that is both accessible and compelling to them. As part of the 25th year anniversary celebrations, we're presenting our newest literary promotion program, J and E, and the Zig Zag C, today and tomorrow at the AT&amp;T Theater here in downtown. We had a performance this morning, and we invite any of you and your staff who are able to make the performance tomorrow morning at 9:15. You'd be more than welcome and see it in person. We'd also extended invitations to your offices to join us at an evening celebration this coming Thursday. Our educational theater department touches the lives of youth and their parents in community by inspiring them to make informed decisions about their health through theater and music. Since its inaugural performance in 1985, we've provided more than 5,000 performances in the city of Los Angeles alone. The issues we currently address range from obesity prevention to conflict management and literacy promotion to STD prevention. Each year here in Southern California, we reach a quarter million students and adults with 1,500 performances and workshops. If you'd like to learn more about our educational theater, sponsored by Kaiser Permanente Community Benefit, please feel free to contact me. We have with us today Jerry Farrell, who's the director of our program, Rusty, who is Associate Director, Rossi Proctor, and I'm blanking on his name. And Jenny, who also plays a key role with our educational theater program. So thank you very much for this recognition. It means a great deal to us to be recognized for a work that is a labor of love and a passion for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one speaker, Mr. Coretts. No stranger to Kaiser Hospital.
I think that may be true. Actually, I was born there at Kaiser Sunset. It's my distinct honor to join in welcoming Kaiser Permanente to council today. It's my distinct honor to join in welcoming Kaiser Permanente to council today. For the past 25 years, their educational theater program, or ETP as it's known by many in the community, has reached thousands of students and adults, educating them on the importance of health. I'd like to thank and congratulate Kaiser Permanente on the great work they're doing through their innovative workshops and performances, and for teaching thousands of Angelenos on how to improve their quality of life. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much to both of you, and thank you to Kaiser for your great work. Appreciate you being here. With that, we've asked, had a request to take item 18 out of order. Ms. Perry, did you want to say something at the outset on 18 called special? And then, we do have approximately 30, about 50 cards, and we have folks from both "for" and "against," and then a couple that are unidentified that we can take after that. So, Ms. Perry.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I would like to ask that we reopen the public comment for 30 minutes, allowing 15 minutes for each side. And I would like the opposed side to go first. Second, I would like everyone who came to support the amendment today to stand up and to be recognized.
So, I wanted my colleagues to see who is here today to speak in support of this amendment, the folks who are wearing the, I guess, light blue or light turquoise t-shirts. Thank you very much for coming today, and I appreciate the fact that you've taken time out of your busy schedules to come here and express your opinion to my colleagues and on the record as to your support for this amendment. And I would recommend, Mr. President, that each person not exceed one minute so we can get as many people as possible to speak on the record. So, with that, Mr. President, I will hold my full comments until after the public comment period is done, out of respect for the people who have come here on their own time to express themselves on the record.
Okay. Thank you. I was just consulting. We have 31 cards right now that are in opposition, 17 cards that are for, and two or three that didn't say one way or the other. So, we'll go in order. We'll try to get to as many as we can.
And I ask for the opposed side to go first.
Sure. We'll go back and forth like we usually do. So, we'll do like five and five, back and forth, starting with opposing.
Well, I just think it gets more confusing.
Okay.
You just let all the people who are opposed within the 15 minutes, and then let all the people who are in support go. So, if you go back and forth, it does make it kind of confusing.
Our first speaker is Mr., excuse me. Excuse me. We'll have order in chambers. We will have order in chambers. This is a decision of the council president. We'll go, Mr. Tzomak is our first speaker, and then Alberto Tlatoa. One minute each.
While he's walking up, Mr. President, this did have a full public hearing in Budget and Finance also.
Okay. For the record, there was a public hearing in Budget and Finance. The city attorney wanted to let us know. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tzomak. I'm one of the representatives of the South Central Farmers. You know, we've been at this for eight years, trying to save the largest urban farm in the U.S. We've done amazing work. You've seen that we've been recognized internationally for our food sovereignty work. We've reached out to many of the constituents in your community, over 100,000, through our farmers markets, through our food, through affordable housing. Today, you're going to hear from a lot of people for and against the work that we've done, but the matter still remains is that we triple or quadruple the access to green space and community gardens. We've raised the level internationally. Our Academy-nominated documentary on this issue, on the cover-up of this land sale, has gone international, and we're recognized as community heroes around the world, except, you know, no one is a prophet in their own land. Today, if you vote for this, you're voting for a cover-up, and if you vote for us, you're voting to stand with the community.
Alberto Tlatoa is our next speaker. After that is Linda Piara Avila. Good morning.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Alberto Tlatoa. I'm a UCLA student, and I just want to break down the sale of the property since a lot of, some of, you have some news council members who might not be familiar with the sale of the property. So, in 2006, the land was sold in a backdoor deal to Ralph Horowitz for $5.1 million. And actually, Judge Crispel had, in three court cases, said that Horowitz did not have a case for the lawsuit, and he did not have a right to the property. So, now, Jan Perry promised 2.6 acres of this to a park, and we expect to hold that commitment because we want that park in our community. You cannot divide pollution into districts. And this is not a district, a nine-district issue. It's an issue of all cities, all Angelenos of Los Angeles. And we're here today to oppose this sale because we want a park, we deserve a park, and he is the one who's going to play in that park because that park is going to exist, and we're going to make sure it happens.
Thank you. Linda Piara Avila is our next speaker. After that will be Stephanie Gonzalez.
Installation of the soccer fields was a condition of the 2003 Closed Session Agreement between the city and Mr. Horowitz. The city should hold him to the terms of this original agreement to the condition of sale, which largely benefited Mr. Horowitz. This was the deal negotiated, a community benefit of green open space, the value of which cannot be measured in dollars and cents. Our city needs more recreational space, especially soccer fields in South Central, as the photos that I am submitting demonstrate, where people are shown playing soccer on tennis courts in Ross Snyder Park. It is a matter of personal and corporate responsibility to hold Mr. Horowitz accountable to the community. It is a matter of environmental justice for a community already enduring the effects of cumulative negative impacts of air and noise pollution, which already exceed federal standards. This is why the Occupy movement has ignited. People are tired of corporate greed being encouraged by government. Please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Gonzalez. After that will be Orocio Hernandez. Good morning.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Gonzalez. I'm here representing the South Central Farmers and the youth of the city of Los Angeles. I hear about eco-friendly solutions, building recreational parks in the city of Los Angeles, and bringing the community together, and importantly, keeping our children healthy by providing them community parks, gardens, and fruit-vegetables, and bike rides right around the corner of their homes. And the epidemic of obesity and diabetes among our children, they deserve the best. They deserve their park. They deserve a solution for this. And I think by having this garden, giving them to them, it's part of a big recreational area in our city. And it's morally and ethical wrong not to have this because this is our kids, this is our children that are going to be our future, and this is what they need the most at the moment.
Thank you. Orocio Hernandez, Orocio. And then, after that is Bernie Navarro. Good morning.
Hello. My name is Rosio. I'm an immediate resident of the neighborhood. I'm a recent college graduate of Georgetown University, and I just want to express my opposition to this amendment because in this community, we have a really big problem with noise pollution. I have a mother with health issues, and it just about kills her, like all the industrial, the industrial stuff that's there. And to add more to this neighborhood without any green space is just, it's not justice. I don't think you understand how much pollution and, like, noise pollution there is in this neighborhood. Since the South Central Farm has left, since it was evicted, there has been a ton, the noise pollution has just gone up way much. And my family has been in this neighborhood since the 1970s, and, you know, I don't know how much longer we're going to be able to be there if all of a sudden, we're going to have more traffic. Like, there are already trucks going down our street, and I don't think you'd want to live there, like, with these kinds of conditions. So, please save the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernie Navarro is our next speaker. After that is Alicia Rivera.
Okay. I just want to say, you know, in time, when there are mistakes made, we're supposed to learn from them. But unfortunately here, this is already the third time that there's going to be another mistake. We, as a community of South Central, of the area, we deserve green space. And I understand, you know, that other areas within the neighborhood also, you know, they want to have benches, they want to have this, they want to have that, they want to improve themselves, but we also do. We deserve that right to have a green space for our family, for our community. When the farm was there, you know, our grandparents had someone to take the kids, and, you know, they would stay out of trouble. But now, you're making the possibility impossible. And yeah, you know, you have all these people with these blue shirts that are saying, yes, we want, you know, we support jobs and we want jobs, but at the same time, what kind of jobs are they going to be? You know, we want a green space, we want jobs, but we deserve that green space. And that was a promise you had made to the community, and so, you need to make sure that you fulfill that promise and stop breaking them.
Alicia Rivera is our next speaker.
And, Mr. President, the speakers should direct their comments to the council as a whole.
Thank you. If we can have Alicia Rivera, and thank you for the reminder.
My name is Alicia Rivera, and I'm here on representation of my organization, Communities for a Better Environment, an environmental organization fighting for health and justice, and economic justice in Los Angeles and in California. And I'm here to ask the Los Angeles City Council to uphold your promise of 2003 to where you promised an area of the former South Central Farm for a community park and a soccer field. We know that Los Angeles City Council is always mindful about quality of life for all residents of Los Angeles, and I think that especially in that community that they deserve that the same consideration be applied to them as in other areas. It's a heavily industrial zone, as we know. There is a great deal, a great deal of noise and air pollution that comes from that area, not only affecting the community in the vicinity, but everybody in Los Angeles. So, a park and a green space would really help to improve the quality of life for all of us, and especially in that community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. That was Alicia? You were Alicia already? You were Alicia Rivera? Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Lupe Hernandez. Lupe Hernandez here. Oh, there she comes. After Ms. Hernandez will be Neelam Sharma.
My name is Guadalupe Hernandez, and I've been a sewer, I've been working with a garment for 20 years. And I do want to have better jobs, you know, working with garments, but we want better jobs with better rights. We do not want to have jobs that are going to be exploiting us. We all want jobs that are going to be dignified and that we're going to have rights as workers. There was a promise that there was going to be better things for us, but things are now changing. I want to guarantee from all of you guys that we're going to have better jobs.
Thank you. All right. So, next speaker is Neelam Sharma. Then, we have Rosa Miranda.
My name is Neelam Sharma. I'm the executive director of Community Services Unlimited, a nonprofit in South Central Los Angeles, and we are working to bring fresh food access to South L.A. residents. We do this with numerous partners, including many of the agencies of the city, and we do it with support from our local council representatives, Councilwoman Bernard Parks and Councilwoman Jan Perry. One of the things, one of the serious issues we face in South L.A. in addition to fresh food access is the sparsity of public spaces for our community. And I would say that the move to sell the final piece of land that was once what is known as the South Central Farm is not in the best interests of the residents of South L.A. Of course, we also desperately need jobs in South Central, and we are working to create those jobs, but we need jobs with living wages and jobs that are part of the global shift that is currently happening towards green and resilient communities. Ms. Perry, a few years ago, you honored me as an Earth Day activist. I invite you and your colleagues to think seriously and deeply about the impact of what you are proposing on the communities of South.
Thank you. Thank you. Rosa Miranda is our next speaker. After Ms. Miranda is Michael Feinstein.
My name is Rosa Miranda. I am a member of the Passengers Union. Consejal Jan Perry. Miss Council Member Jan Perry. I'm here representing many of the members that you represent. We want to ask all the council members, and especially you, that you do whatever you promised. In the commitment that you have with us about the 2.6 acres. That have been used as a green area. The Passenger Union is trying to fight against the effects of the, of the green, of the gases. And we cannot negotiate with the environment.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Disculpa, eso solo es un minuto por each.
Es traducción.
It just went one minute per speaker. He can give you about 15 more seconds. Excuse me. We'll have order in the chambers, or people will be removed. We have another 15 seconds. Go ahead.
We know very well if they sell this land. There is not going to be a real commitment. And a political commitment. If you vote today, you are going to be discriminating the environment.
Thank you. Josefina Medina is going to be after Michael Feinstein.
As a former mayor and city council member, I have a lot of experience with in-lu fees, and this off-site in-lu fee in lieu of onsite open space does not pass the smell test. Your city general plan and the open space element specifically calls out the need for more open space in the city, and the only neighborhood it names specifically is this neighborhood, South Central. The privatization of public assets through the political process is why the people are out on the lawn there right now, and supposedly, you people endorse that. This action would be in conflict with that. We all know that if you leave the park on site, the project cannot be improved through the EIR, cannot be approved through the EIR process. So, instead, we're hearing this game of jobs versus environment, and all these people in the blue shirts coming out and working against the working class, their own working class interest to avoid environmental review. This has the appearance of delivering for developers public assets so that people can get reelected. That's not the kind of region I want to live in.
Our next speaker is Josefina Medina. After that is Daryl Hannah.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Josefina Medina. I know it's not your fault I'm not speaking English, but I understand. This is the reason I had the petitions, give me a little more time because the translator need time to tell, I tell you. Okay. La razón que estoy aquí.
The reason that I'm here. De que personalmente. That I personally. Me opongo a la venta del terreno. That I oppose the sale of this land. Del 41 y Alameda. At 41st and Alameda. Y la razón más importante para mí. And the biggest reason for me. Es justicia ambiental. It's environmental justice. Justicia de salud para nuestra familia. Justice for our family, the health of our families. Me da gusto ver mucha gente apoyando en contra. I'm here to see, I see many people here opposed. Pero pregúntense cuántos tienen enfermedades como asma. Ask yourselves how many of you have diseases like asthma. A causa de la contaminación. Because of the contamination in our communities. Como diabetes. Like diabetes. Porque no tenemos comida saludable. Because we don't have healthy food. No ponemos trabas. We don't put a stop. Especialmente ustedes consejales. You don't put a stop, a council member. Cuando hay una petición. When there's a petition. Para poner licors, 99s. Comida que nos sirve. Junk food stores. Así es que piensen en la justicia a la tierra y a la gente.
Gracias. Le dio más tiempo para la traducción. Gracias. Daryl Hannah is our next speaker. Daryl Hannah is our next speaker.
Hey there, I'm in council, and it's really a rivalry right now. One second. John Quigley will follow.
Good afternoon. I find it shocking and deeply distressing that five years on, we are still here fighting to save the South Central Farm, and now even a small vestige of it in the soccer field of 2.6 acres that you yourselves approved. The people from the South Central Farm community have already suffered the great loss of their farm, which was their source of food, their safe haven, and their green space. In the four and a half years since the shameful eviction of the farmers and the bulldozing of the farm, it has sat as an empty dirt field when it could have been feeding thousands. The South Central Farm spearheaded and inspired the National Urban Farm Movement. It has been recognized internationally as Food Sovereignty, with a Food Sovereignty Award, and we as a species have now hit the seventh billion person two weeks ago. There is now a global recognition of the importance of creating and supporting sustainable, self-sufficient communities, local food security, and livable cities. We need green jobs, not sweatshop labor jobs. We need green, open space, not more pollution. And I find it very upsetting to witness the blatant and corrupt manipulation that Jan Perry has brought to this city council meeting.
John Quigley is our next speaker.
So the technical term I see up there is administrative exemption, but make no mistake, this is about a broken promise. This is about a bait and switch. This is about political manipulation, with all due respect to the political theater we've seen here today by Councilwoman Perry. And the idea is that somehow this is about jobs versus green space. It's not about that at all. It's about sweatshop jobs versus green space and green jobs. And this is a gut check for all of you, and I know some of you on this council, you have political aspirations. This is a gut check. This is an integrity check. You got a developer who said one thing to get what he wanted, now he's being aided by a councilwoman to say something else to get, to break that promise to get something else. So I want to, Jimmy Savalas is here, he's going to read a petition where we had 2,500 people sign.
My apologies, Mr. Quigley. It's actually one of the rules, we cannot yield time. Somebody could then have 20 minutes of time. My apologies, but if you'd like to give those to us, we'll make sure that they're distributed.
We'd like to enter into the record. Okay, this is an outrage.
Thank you.
For this exemption.
Thank you. That was our 15th speaker. We'll now go to the four side. Our first speaker is Ann Williams. Is Ann Williams here? After that will be Officer Rick Madrigal. Actually, I'm sorry, there's no for against on Mr. Madrigal's.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association, representing over 400 businesses employing over 350,000 people in the Los Angeles region, and I'm here today in strong support of the conversion of the pledge agreement to a cash payment. In this time, when we're bleeding manufacturing jobs, the city should be doing everything in its power to facilitate the growth, growth of facilities precisely like the one being contemplated for the Lancer site. The land is ideally situated for clothing manufacturing, close to established distribution channels, and just a few miles from the fashion district that it fuels. Speaking from the perspective of downtown L.A., where community-friendly parks are in short supply, we absolutely understand the importance of having access to safe, clean, open space, but the city needs to be flexible, particularly in this lasting economic downturn, and the conversion from a land pledge to a cash pledge is a reasonable outcome for the property owner. It's a win for the city, and it's a win for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, I'm sorry, Officer Madrigal, were you on the for against side? General comments? Okay, hold on one second, then we'll go to general comments in a second. Myung Su Seok. Myung Su Seok is our next speaker. And then after that is Charleston Newsom.
Hi, good morning, council members. My name is Myung Su Seok, representing Pima Project this morning. We will have seven employees who will speak about many reasons why Pima is good for workers and good for Los Angeles, and I won't touch upon those subjects. I'll let them speak for themselves. But I do want to touch upon, touch upon one misconception. There's been a lot of allegation, especially from South L.A. Central Farmers, that Pima is a sweatshop, and that misconception and that allegation is incorrect. Pima's combined payroll is over $17 million a year. Average dollars, this translates into a double-digit wage per hour. Coupled with job growth, this project is a very big economic contributor to that surrounding community. We are planning to transfer in about 600 jobs, and projected out, over the next four or five years, there'll be another 600 job creation at that site. Please allow the Pima project to go forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charleston Newsom. After Mr. Newsom will be Hugo Barralles.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Charleston. I'm here to ask for your support for Pima and the proposed land-to-cash conversion. I've worked with Miss Me, one of the investing companies of Pima, as a webmaster for three years, and as well, I can testify that it's definitely not a sweatshop. I've worked on the west side, I've worked in Beverly Hills, I've worked in Orange County, and this is one of the best companies I've worked for as far as how they treat their Pima represents an opportunity for our company to grow, and in addition, Pima investors have pledged to institute a strong local hiring program for both construction and permanent workers. The goal of the program is to hire 30% of the construction and new permanent workers from surrounding neighborhood where Pima will be located. In closing, I'd just like to say that Pima means more revenue for the city to give more service to Los Angeles residents like myself, and I ask that you please support the proposed land-to-cash conversion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pedro Barrera. Pedro Barrera? Is there Pedro Barrera? After that is Hugo Barralles.
Sí, buenos días. Mi nombre es Pedro Barrera.
Good morning. My name is Pedro Barrera.
Y soy uno de los campesinos que están situados en la Stanford.
I am one of the farmers located at Stanford.
In the 111 place.
At 111 place.
Y una de las razones que estamos aquí es porque los.
One of the reasons that we are here.
La organización del South Central Farms está proclamando impedir ayuda para el grupo cuando no tiene ningún campesino.
It's because the South Central Farmers, they are indicating that they are asking for help, but they don't have any farmers.
Porque los campesinos que trabajamos, la 41 y la Alameda, estamos situados en 111 place in Stanford.
That work at 41 and Alameda are located at 111 place.
Y estamos invitando a todo el público a que vaya a conocer. Nosotros no cobramos membresía.
We're inviting all the public to come and see us. We don't charge for membership.
Y no, tampoco chequamos las bolsas de los campesinos, que es lo que llevan para afuera para pedir la mitad.
And we don't check the farmers' bags when they are leaving the place to ask them to give half of it.
Y señores concejales, nosotros confiamos en ustedes que van a tomar la mejor decisión sobre ese terreno, porque ese terreno nosotros no estamos interesados en él.
We trust that you are going to take the best decision for the land because we are not interested in that land.
El alcalde nos lo ofreció días después de que se desalojó, y nosotros no quisimos regresar porque eso se convirtió en una hielera, que lo convirtieron los South Central Farms, que legalmente ellos son South Central Farms, pero los farmers aquí están. Levántense compañeros.
The farmers are here today. Please stand up. The mayor offered us that land after, after the things happened. A few days after everybody left that land, the mayor offered that land to us, but we didn't want it.
Thank you. Gracias. Our next speaker is Hugo Barralles. After that is Luis Gamboa.
Good morning, council members. My name is Hugo Barrales.
We'll have order in chambers. Again, we ask respect of folks. You can express yourself with positive, but please not negative booing or any heckling. Please, go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Hugo Barrales, and I am here to ask for your support for Pima. Over the years, these parks have been filled with gangs, associations with drugs, affiliations, and are being spread around with the children. They're being sold to the children. So instead of having a park that brings a lot of pollution and drugs and gangs, criminal activities, we should open up Pima that's going to help our community over succeed of this economical crisis that we have right now in this moment. So I believe y'all should take the perfect, the perfect opportunity to help us out and succeed our project of Pima. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Gamboa is our next speaker. Luis Gamboa, and then after Mr. Gamboa will be Ernest Roberts.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Luis Gamboa.
My name is Luis Gamboa.
Soy el actual presidente del jardín comunitario que está ubicado en Stanford y Avalon.
I am the president, the actual president of the community garden located.
¿Dónde está localizado?
Stanford y Avalon.
Estoy representando aproximadamente 190 familias.
I'm representing 190 families.
Y nosotros estamos aquí.
We are here.
Para apoyar la decisión de la concejal Jan Perry.
To support Ms. Perry's decision.
Aquí está la mayoría de jardineros que están apoyando, que deben apoyar.
The majority of the gardeners that are here. The majority, the majority of the gardeners that are here are supporting Ms. Jan Perry.
Y estamos muy orgullosos de eso.
We are very proud of that.
Del gran apoyo que nos da.
Of the great support.
Encuentra con el alcalde, Antonio Villarrealosa.
The great support that she gives us.
Y nosotros representamos una comunidad.
We represent a community.
Con el nombre verdadero, no con nombre falso.
With a real name.
Encubriendo mi verdadero nombre, no nombre falso.
Not a false name.
Señor Jazosomo, que su nombre es Esteban Torres, porque no da la cara.
Mister Esteban Torres.
Viene con hipocresía y mentiras.
He comes with lies.
Que lo que tenía últimamente en el jardín de la 41.
Finally, what he had at the 41st garden.
Era un campo de baile de rockeros. No tenía jardineros.
It was a dance field, and he didn't have any gardeners. They were rockers.
Quieren conocer los verdaderos jardineros, vayan a la 111. Allí está la mayoría de jardineros.
Do you want to know the real gardeners? You should go to 111.
Ellos sí son jardineros.
They are gardeners.
Los que él tiene actualmente no saben ni lo que es, pero una mata de maíz.
The ones that he has right now, they don't even know.
Thank you. Thank you. Gracias señor. Es tiempo. Our next speaker is Ernest Roberts.
They don't even know how to plant corn.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ernest Roberts. After that will be Ethel Jones.
My name is Ernest Roberts. I'm the Executive Director of PV Jobs, and we are in support of this project, and I'll tell you why. Developer has committed 30% of all the hiring in construction to local residents, and we're talking about, we're talking very tight local requirements that would include the peublos and within a one, two, three-mile area of the project area. They're also committing to a 10% at-risk requirement for the project to ensure that some of these people who are returning from prisons as a result of the prison downsizing, the homeless population is, you know, SPA 6, this area of South L.A., as I'm sure you know, has the highest unemployment rate, some of the highest poverty rates in the city, in the county, and it is absolutely imperative that this project move forward. Now I would argue that that would take primary concern over the idea of a soccer field. Thank you.
Ethel Jones is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Ethel Jones, and I am a resident of Peublo de la Ria Housing. To sell that land would be great for us. We need the money. We need different things for our community, and those people back there, I don't know what some of them are talking about, but they don't know anything about that property. There was all kinds of homeless people, all kinds of different stuff, rats, dogs, cats, all kinds of stuff. People were living there as residents. It was a homeless encampment rather than a farm.
Our next speaker is Teodoro Perez. Teodoro Perez. Teodoro Perez. After that is Maria Garcia.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Teodoro Perez.
Good morning. My name is Teodoro Perez.
Estamos aquí para ayudar, para que se haga el proyecto de Pima.
We are, we are here to help, to get the Pima project.
Porque nosotros necesitamos trabajos, que se abran trabajos, para poder salir adelante con la familia.
We need jobs in order to go forward with our families.
Porque con los puros parques no vamos a sacar la familia adelante, ocupamos trabajo.
Yes, just with the park, we won't be able to take our family forward. We need jobs.
Y ese, ese es todo lo que les podría decir, pero.
That's all I could say.
Gracias, por todo.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Maria Garcia is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Maria Garcia, and I am here to ask for support for Pima and the proposed land-to-cash conversion. I have worked at Impact, one of the investing companies of Pima, as a receptionist for three years. I am proud to work in a company located in Los Angeles. I am proud to be a Los Angeles resident. Every day, we work hard to manufacture high-quality, high-end clothings for companies like Lucky Jeans, James Purse, and Seven Jeans. When the clothing is finished, we place a tag that says "Made in USA." As all of you may know, there aren't too many U.S.-based garments manufacturers, let alone Los Angeles-based. We are one of those very few. We work very hard, and as a team, we have become a successful Los Angeles company. Forty-seven percent of us live within one-mile radius of the Pima site. Over 75% live within three-mile radius of Pima sites. We know that is good for this community. Pima is good for Los Angeles. Please support us. Thank you.
We, we have next Adela Barajas. Adela Barajas, is she here? If not, we have Lynn Myers. Good morning.
It is very sad for me to stand here and see how my community is being divided. Okay, so I don't know about where your ethics and where is everything, but what we need to, I am Adela Barajas from Life After Uncivil Ruthless Acts. I'm an organization that works with the community that's most affected by it. And yes, I need open space, I need parks. Yes, I need jobs, and I want you guys all to please keep in mind the youth, the community members that you are dividing here today, Pima or farmers, it doesn't matter. The community that lives there, that has to live with the pollution, with the open space and no jobs, is what matters. So I don't know why this community is being divided. I don't know how many of you represent the community that lives there, but I'm representing them. I deal with homicide victims. I am a survivor of a loved one being murdered, so I want you guys to pay very well attention to the community members from that community. We need jobs, but we also need green space, and we need a healthy community. So it's on you.
Good morning, honorable council members. I'm Lynn Myers from the L.A. Fashion District Business Improvement District, representing 15-member Board of Directors, 950 property owners, and over 2,500 merchants in our district. We respectfully request council to approve this amendment. Although not within the boundaries of the L.A. Fashion District, industrial manufacturing developments are critical to maintaining the vitality of the Los Angeles fashion industry. We appreciate Council District 9's recognition of the importance of the apparel industry to the future of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vivian Bowers. Vivian Bowers. And then after that is Marilyn Sanchez.
My name is Vivian Bowers, and I'm here representing. Good morning, council. My name is Vivian Bowers, and I'm here representing CD9 as a stakeholder and also Central Avenue Business Association. I encourage you to approve the amendment to convert the land to cash. In our community and in that area, we need those parks improved. They have been neglected for decades and are in complete disarray and therefore do not service the community properly. The youth in that community need activities. They need things to keep them busy after school and during the times that they are off from school, the summer times, et cetera, et cetera. So that we can encourage them to become constructive and contributing citizens. Finally, we need jobs. We need jobs throughout this nation, but particularly in our area, which has the greatest unemployment in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Sanchez is our next speaker. After that is Brandy Chappell.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Sanchez, and I'm here to support PMA and the proposed land and cash convert. I am working, I work at Poetry Company for PMA as a sales representative for four years. We, by building our new facility, we can consolidate our opportunities and increase our capacity. I have lived in South Central for twenty-three years. I don't think we need a new park on Alameda where kids can be like running out on the street, and like, it's a big street. So if we have a park there, I mean, as down the street from there, we have Forty First, the park on Ross Snyder's. Actually, we have gangsters and everybody hanging down on that park. So we create another park, it's like building for more gangsters and more killing on that area. I don't think we need a new park in that area, especially if it's gonna be on Alameda and Forty First. That's a bad area for a park, especially for kids. I know because I lived there for twenty-three years, and it's a bad thing to have another park there.
Brandy Chappell is our next speaker.
Good morning, city council. My name is Brandy Chappell. I'm representing Mark Wilson from the Coalition for Responsible Community Development. And we are here today to express our support for the proposal, and here's our reason why. Unfortunately, we do not have the luxury of being a directly involved with the issues surrounding the Forty First and Alameda site. But what we are is a community-based organization that works with at-risk youth in need of jobs. Twenty-point-seven percent of our community is unemployed. Forty-eight percent of our children between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five do not have a high school diploma. What that means is that we have a population of people that are either unemployable, underemployed, or unemployed. So we respect both sides of this issue. But being a community-based organization that represents the interests of the parents in this room, we are hopeful that this moves forward in a positive way, even though I know that's kind of difficult to gauge now. And we express our full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, I think we only had fourteen speakers, the clerk reminded me, in the first round, so I'm sorry. And we have one other speaker on the against side, Shana Grace, and then we have some general comments as well.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm here to speak about equity, justice, and jobs. Everyone has spoken today, and we can hear what they have to say, and we can have all of it. We can have the jobs, we can have the soccer field, we can also have farm plots for three-hundred-and-fifty families. We can have a school, we can have housing, and we can create a catalytic development that would change the landscape of the pollution in that neighborhood. My family is, grew up, I grew up in that neighborhood. I don't specifically work there. I'm an affordable housing developer, as many of you know. And I respect Ms. Perry and all of you, and I'm asking you to think there is an alternative. And if you approve this today, that dies. The catalytic conversion of that neighborhood has an opportunity to be something other than what it would be if we don't think about alternatives in this green time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Officer Rick Madrigal is our next speaker for general comments.
Yes, my name is Officer Rick Madrigal. I'm the senior lead officer that's assigned to Forty First and Alameda. And first of all, I am not here to give, take sides one way or the other, and I'm not here representing the department on the issue. I was just asked to come in and address a safety concern with putting a park at Forty First and Alameda. And the major concern is the, as you know, it's an industrial area, and there's a heavy traffic on Alameda and Long Beach. There's also railroad tracks that go north and south along Long Beach Avenue. And with all the heavy traffic and the trucks and the trains, one of the concerns would be the kids crossing Long Beach. The majority of the residents that would use the park live west of the tracks, and they would have to cross Long Beach and all the traffic.
Thank you, sir. We'll read into the record the names of the other individuals. On the foreside, there was also Lisa Song, Amanda Zapata, Karina Wisner, excuse me, Lucy Maldonado, Pedro Santos, Everett Figueroa, Manuel Avalos, Berta Velez, Cliff Hoffman, and David Roberts. We had on the against side Mirabel Tlatoa, Elizabeth Chavez, Rosalba Sanchez, Energy, Alma Soto, Ross Placette, Woody Joseph Sandberg, Refugio Ceballos, Jose Carlos Lopez, Jack Neff, James Savala, Tanya Selig, Daniel Santana Hernandez, Alex Dorsey, Bruce Campbell, Arceli Tlatoa, Robert Leyland, Orchid Velasquez, Arminak Norjanian. We had Miriam Fogler, Donna Pearman, Esperanza Estrada, Maria Hernandez, Benjamin or Benjamín Velasquez, and Janice Herrera. With that, we'll go back to Ms. Perry.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I appreciate everyone who has come out here today to express their opinions. And colleagues, I sent a letter to each of you last Thursday, November the tenth, telling you about the Lancer property located at Forty First and Alameda. The letter outlined my specific reasons for proposing the amendment to the pledge agreement. So today, I'm asking that you approve an amendment to the pledge agreement that the city executed in 2003 as a result of a lawsuit settlement that would convert a land pledge of two-point-six acres to a cash pledge of approximately three-point-six million dollars. The Budget and Finance Committee unanimously approved the amendment on October the twenty-fourth. Now, I'm asking for the amendment for two very simple reasons. Forty First and Alameda is not an appropriate location for a park, and the site should be used, fully used, for job creation. Southeast Los Angeles is a dense area with many competing interests. It is an area that needs more green space, more affordable housing, more retail opportunities, and more jobs. In the past ten years, I have worked very hard to ensure compatible uses to improve the neighborhoods of southeast Los Angeles, and I would like to provide you with two examples. The first example is that Twenty-Ninth and San Pedro. It is a residential community with an elementary school that had an industrial island, including a chrome plating facility right in the middle of the community. The use was grandfathered in before I took office, and as a result of poor public policy and neglect and spot zoning. Now, through collaboration with the community and development partner, Urban Housing Communities, we have now embarked on a four-phase affordable housing development. Phase one is completed, and people are moving in now. And I'm pleased to report that the chrome plating facility was ordered to be closed by December thirty-first of this year. This is a concrete example of transforming a neighborhood and promoting compatible uses. Another example is the new wetlands park at Fifty-Fourth and Avalon. This site had formerly been used as an MTA, maintenance and signage yard, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I worked together with the city and MTA to remove the industrial uses and replace them with a nine-acre wetland park, which will be open December 2011. This is another example of how diligent work can improve communities in South Los Angeles by promoting compatible uses. The situation we are dealing with today is very similar to the examples I have outlined. In this case, we are looking at a heavily-traveled, heavily-industrialized zone along the Alameda corridor, where it would be inappropriate to spot zone for residential uses. The rezone, to rezone the area would be contradictory to any effort to reconcile poor zoning decisions made in the past and makes no sense at a time when creating job opportunities should be the number-one priority. Now, I understand for each one of you that it's important to recognize that the Lancer site has been vacant since 2006, and it's not been active for the last five years. And as Mr. Barrera and Mr. Gamboa highlighted for you, many of the gardeners who used to garden at Forty First and Alameda have moved and are gardening at Hundred-and-Eleventh and Avalon on the Department of Water and Power right-of-way. In fact, many of those gardeners are here today and have expressed support for the amendment. It is also critical to note that this is privately-held property. The owner is in escrow with four companies. They are Poetry, Impact, Miss Me, and Active, that's what PMA means, and they plan to open a headquarters on this site. Now, currently, PMA has five-hundred-and-ninety employees. Forty percent of those employees live within one mile of the site. Additionally, the construction of the new facilities will bring three-hundred new construction jobs, and once the facilities are operating at a hundred percent capacity, up to six-hundred new permanent jobs will be created. These jobs are critically needed in an area of our city where our unemployment rate is consistently over twenty percent. Now, PMA has agreed to partner with PV Jobs, YWCA Job Corps, and the Coalition for Responsible Community Development to implement a local hiring program. So not only will amending the pledge agreement allow for the site to be maximized for job creation, it will also generate approximately three-point-six million dollars to be used at Pueblo Del Rio Housing Development, Fred Roberts Park, and Ross Snyder Park. Pueblo Del Rio is just south of this property and is one of the largest housing developments in the city. Fred Roberts Park and Ross Snyder Park are within about five to ten minutes of this location. Now, I have worked extensively with the community to develop a scope of work at each site, and that information is included in the report from the chief legislative analyst. The approval of the amendment agreement provides a situation that will bring new jobs when they are desperately needed, vital resources to the parks that can use the funds immediately to implement improvements, resources to Pueblo Del Rio, and an ongoing commitment to the farmers at Hundred-and-Eleventh and Avalon that we will continue to work with them on their expansion and development of their park with them and with the garden council. Over two-thousand people live at Pueblo Del Rio. Forty percent of that population there is under the age of seventeen, and the average income for families at Pueblo Del Rio is sixteen thousand dollars a year. The recreation facilities at this development have not seen investment since 1986. I would like to take this opportunity and move forward with this amendment today to make their lives better and the lives of the people who go to Ross Snyder, Fred Roberts, and for the lives of the people in Pueblo Del Rio, and for the lives of the people who work and walk to work within one mile of this potential project, and let people have jobs, and I hope that you will support me. Thank you very much.
Any other members wishing to be heard? Do we have any other council members who wish to be heard? If I could again ask for order if our sergeants-at-arms will please. Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll then on that item. Please open the roll. Please close the roll. And please tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. If I can please have order in council chambers. That item is approved. We'll move to the next item called special, please.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Perk.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, Mr. Perk has asked that.
Hold on one second, Madam Clerk. If we could please have. We'll take a five-minute recess, colleagues. If we can ask the. If I could ask please folks to disperse from the council chambers. Thank you. Colleagues, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back. Please, don't go far, but we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll be, we'll be back in recess in about three minutes, folks. If we can bring the chambers back to order, please, if our sergeants-at-arms will assist us. We're gonna come back into session in about one minute. If we can ask folks to please come to order. Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am, if we can come to order, I'd like to ask you last time respectfully to please clear the chambers or stay here, please, in order. Thank you. All right, we'll come back into session, colleagues. On the next item called special, Mr. Perk, you had items twenty-one through twenty-four called special. I know you had some questions on those items.
Yes, Mr. President, we'd like to move item twenty-four, we have the information, and we'd like to hold till Friday, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
So it'd be to continue items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three until November eighteenth without objection, and take a vote on twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay, let's go ahead.
And also, we'd ask you also to reconsider number twelve.
Yeah, hold on one sec. Let's take a vote on twenty-four, please. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and then reconsideration of number 12, Mr. Parks.
Number 12, uh, we, we've asked Building and Safety to work with the, uh, resident to continue this to 12/7, to, for them to work out a payment agreement on the lien.
Okay, let's go ahead and reconsider item number 12. Please open the roll. Just close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, and would you want to continue that to a date certain?
Uh, they would like it, uh, the Building and Safety would like it back 12/7.
Okay, that would be the 7th of December without objection.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'd also like to continue 51 to Friday.
All right. Continue item number 51 until this Friday without objection. That'll also be until the 18th. Uh, if we can take up item 55 next, Mr. Englander called special? Mr. Englander? Item number 55 is before us.
Yeah, I was going to ask if we can just postpone this until next week would be great.
Okay.
Or this Friday would actually could work well. We didn't hear back from the department on it.
Let's go ahead. We'll continue that till the 18th as well without objection, and I believe there was a substitute motion for Mr. Wesson on number 64. Has that been circulated, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it has been circulated.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Uh, that leaves us just item number 32, which are called special, um, and Mr. Reyes as well.
Even though I've retired, I will take the chair one last time, never to be sitting in it again. Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Um, I just wanted to speak briefly. Mr. Reyes and I both worked on this item number 32 here today, and I rise today in support of creating a Los Angeles solar zoning ordinance to make it easier for us to get solar power on our homes and businesses throughout Los Angeles. And I want to thank my co-author, Mr. Reyes, on this legislation because he worked very hard along with others, especially Deborah Kahan from Planning, Kahan, excuse me, Osama Yunan from Building and Safety, and so many others from the Fire Department, LEDWP, and the public. Um, I think we all want to make sure that Los Angeles is a leader on solar energy to clean and protect our environment, to secure a place at the forefront of a burgeoning green tech sector. I know we had a lot of words here today, both about jobs and the environment. I know that we have shown in these chambers you can do both, and this is a rare opportunity at the forefront. Most of the jobs in solar are not manufacturing, they're actually in the installation, one that represents a rare opportunity for good jobs in a growing economy. This ordinance that Mr. Reyes and I worked on will make sure that red tape doesn't stand in the way of green jobs, innovation, and cleaner energy. We all know that rooftops are an untapped energy resource, bringing cleaner air and lower power bills, jump-starting the solar development market right here in Los Angeles, and this ordinance would allow us to make it easier. Uh, we all know, many of us who have had solar installation, that that can actually sometimes be a quite complicated process, but I want to thank Mr. Reyes, it was a joy to work with him on this and members of the solar and green communities, to make sure that we do figure out a way for LA to make it as easy as possible. This should be a core industry, just like we talked about the film industry and getting a permit to film something should be easier here than anywhere else in the country. We want to make sure that having solar power is easiest here in Los Angeles as well. So thank you, Mr. Reyes, and everybody else who worked on this, and I ask for your input.
Mr. Reyes.
Just briefly, I wanted to comment that this is one step of many that gets us to a place we can actually start looking at this industry. This is about the structures, the structures that hold up the panels, the structures that go on our houses, on commercial, on industrial buildings. So it gives the Fire Department and Building and Safety a way to look at this, uh, at these facilities. Still coming back to Plum, uh, this was a directive to send this to the city attorney's office, um, and hopefully we're trying to make things a little bit more efficient by not having to go through this loop over and over again. But hopefully in the future, when it comes from Plum, it should go directly to the city attorney's office, and we're hoping the city clerk will understand that process because we kept, we add this extra loop that adds time, but I want to thank the council president for, uh, pushing this issue to the extent that we can become more predictable in how we invest in our city, which is crucial in creating jobs, and that we are focused on the green industry. The question is always where and how, and step by step, we're getting closer to the answer, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labange?
I got to ask the planning staff to come, uh, since they're here. What are other cities doing about this?
Well, cities in California are required to allow solar structures, um, by right, and we allow them right now, too. We're just making some slight modifications to our, to our code.
But is it by right on an existing structure, or how could it be a? I know even with the advancement of, uh, the satellite television, you have these big, the old school, you know, big drum-like receivers. Uh, what, what, what could the people expect?
Well, the state is fairly broad in what it allows the municipalities to, to regulate. Right now, they can be of any size, and we're not even allowed to mo, to regulate the size of the panels. All we are allowed to do per state law is regulate how high they go and how far into the setbacks they go. So as far as the size of the panels, we have no jurisdiction over that.
But what, you're a planner, so how do you envision, what do they say nationally? What do they say internationally? Give me just some of the early stages, since we're at the early stages.
This is Charlie Raj, the Planning Department staff. One of the things this does is regulate the height of the structures holding up the solar panel so that you don't have like 15, 20-foot-high structures rising over the height limit of buildings. So this is actually going to decrease some of that, so we don't have these.
Right, and what happens if your neighbor has high trees? What, what, how much of this, I'm just saying, this is bad news?
Solar access itself, um, is, is a difficult issue if you've got high trees. Those are the breaks.
I just want, I just want to throw it on the table, because I remember the fire inspector about the Hollywood Hills, and they were talking about overgrowth at the Hollywood Hills, and so I'm flashing, let's say, Charlie, you're a good-looking guy, you're the solar panel, and I'm a tall tree, and I block you, but I'm in a neighbor's yard. Does that have anything to do, are we looking at some of those things, uh, because of the impacts? Because you're at the ground floor right now, right? Uh, are we looking at reflections? Are there any problems with, if everybody has a solar panel, is there a reflection to the sky that affects pilots? I don't know. I just want to put this out. I, I support this initiative, but I want to just see if we're looking broad as we transform, uh, in this way. And how much will it look on HPOZs in neighborhoods that have HPOZs on houses? Where would the structures be?
Normally, in an HPOZ, if it was in the, let's say, in Hancock Park or Windsor Square, which would be the areas of your interest, they're on the rear of the structure, outside of the line of sight from the front of the building. They're perfectly within the right.
How about on a historic structure?
On a historic structure, on a contributing structure.
But you're going to look at this.
Right.
Because we want to make sure as you go for the ground floor, you do it right.
Right.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership on this, and Mr. Reyes, for your incredible leadership on, on this issue. Look, uh, I'm, I'm the West Side over there, and folks are going really fast with solar, and I'm thrilled, especially Mar Vista has been the, been, been the, the model, but my whole district is doing it. Everybody knows flat roofs and sunny Southern California is a no-brainer. We just have to make it work, so there's various strategies. I just want to be clear, when you say the following exemptions for structures that solely support solar energy systems, reductions in the parking stall length and width, limited waivers for non-conforming parking lots, and modified height exceptions, two, a new conditional use for otherwise unallowable structures that solely support solar energy, and three, other technical corrections. I'm a layman, explain that to me rather quickly.
No, it's on, just wait. Hi. Um, okay, the first one you mentioned was, um, the exceptions to the parking stall width. Sometimes in, um, in the surface parking lots, when a developer would like to put up a solar panel on top of the parking space.
Right.
To actually put the solar structures next to it, they would impede into the sides of the, um, of the parking stall. So what we've done is allowed some exceptions, and you can, you can impede about 10 inches into the parking stall width as long as it's as far away as possible from the turn aisle.
So that allows the car to be parked and also the solar panel to work.
Exactly. It's trying to do both things, and it's not impeding into, it's not pushing the car out further, and it's not making, and it's, it's got to be a 10-inch square, basically, in one corner, one pocket. And as far as the exemption to the number of parking spaces, sometimes by doing these parking panels over pa, oh, over parking spaces, it, um, it, it impedes into the required parking, so when that case happens, we would exempt the, we would accept that one extra parking space that may have been eaten up by multiple solar panels. So if, that's been a problem that we've seen in other cities, so we want to make sure that we don't have that problem when it comes to LA. So it's not exempting many parking spaces.
It tries to make it as user-friendly as possible, right?
It's not, it's not going to have much of an impact. It's may, it may reduce the parking by one.
Yeah.
You know, in a large parking lot.
Well, I thank you for that. We need to be thinking out of the box like this.
Yeah, we had a really helpful, uh, uh, solar group with members of several council offices.
Right.
DWP and, uh, um, engineering, so we really worked very hard with a bunch of different departments.
When you get it all done and it becomes official, I, I'd like my neighborhood councils in my district to get notice of this and get it online so that they can discuss it among themselves and have this as another way to be more user-friendly for them.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Just for the sake of clarity, this is coming back to Plum. Quite frankly, this shouldn't even be here right now, uh, but it's here today, so I appreciate the dialogue because it allows us to know what's important to my colleagues. So it's going to go back to Plum so that we can get the ordinance written by the city attorney's office. It comes back to Plum, we'll get another shot at this discussion, uh, if there are issues. And, and I ask my colleagues to, um, some of us have historic neighborhoods. Some of us have neighborhoods that are very sensitive to a certain character, whether it be historic or because near hills or view sheds. How these structures emerge on our properties will affect the view shed. The question here is, how will it affect it? So if there are nuances, if there are things that we should consider that speak to the structural impact, now is the time to bring it up. So that way, our staff and planning and city attorney can fold that into the ordinance. So we do have that opportunity, and, and, uh, it's a blessing in disguise that we can actually talk about on the floor, but this is something we want iron out in committee. So, again, colleagues, if there are issues out there that might impact the view shed in respective areas, this is a good time to bring it up to the, to the council office and/or to the, to the planning staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, for a second time?
Just following back, because it is going back to Plum and all that stuff. Does Planning Department have a bulletin that goes out to the neighborhood councils or the neighborhood associations? Because I truly think we got to do this right. So, because when these are, this is infrastructure that's being placed on a property and how it's being placed. Not everybody's going to be equal in this, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct, uh, councilmember. Um, we have a 60-day.
What's correct? What's correct? Not everybody's going to be.
The public process.
Yeah, yeah, but not everybody's going to be equal in this process, because if you live in the shady side of the street, you may not be available to this, you know, so I mean, this is an interesting thing. So just put as much light as you want to get out of the sun for solar energy on this process, and we'll be okay.
Yep. The point I was going to make is, this goes through our 60-day comment period, it's gone to all the neighborhood councils, they're, they're aware of it, and it's gone through Plan Checkout.
And neighborhood associations, too, they're, thank you.
Right. So it's been, it's been out there.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this. Appreciate it. That is approved.
Pleasure.
Uh, next item, or next order of business.
Uh, item four, call special for cards.
Okay. Item four, my apologies to a very patient Sean Murphy, is he still here? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on number four. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well. Next order of business.
Item 16, call special for cards.
Okay. Item 16, we have Nick Nasiri. Is Nick Nasiri here on item number 16? Nick Nasiri?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close the hearing on item 16.
And, Mr. President, um, there was a request to continue this item to December 7th.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue that without objection until the 7th. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilwoman Perry requests to leave at 12 on November 22nd and arrive at 11:00 a.m. on February 1st for city business, and that meets council policy.
All right, she is excused.
Councilwoman Ellicom requests to be excused on January 10th for city business, and that meets council policy.
All right, he is excused as well.
And Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on January 17th, 18th, and 20th for city business, and that meets council policy.
All right, that excuse is granted as well.
That clears the desk.
Uh, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Labange?
I just returned from Guangzhou, China, where our sister city celebrated our 30th anniversary, and what the most exciting thing was is meeting the people who were interns here in some of your offices and ours, uh, someone in Dennis Ein's office, who are now in positions of, in the municipal government, and they all say hello from our sister city of Guangzhou, started by then-mayor Tom Bradley, uh, some 30 years ago. Xie xie.
Thank you very much. Even if that was in Mandarin, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard for announcements? If I could ask everybody, please rise for our adjourning motions, including those in, Mr. Zain, did you have an announcement before our adjourning motion?
It's supposed to come before us tomorrow. We're going to continue it. I got a call from Councilmember Cardenas.
Sorry, which item, Mr. Zain?
Language. Pardon me?
We missed the first part of what you said, which item?
Okay, this regarding the Google matter that was brought up last week, that we're going to continue to tomorrow. We want to continue it. The language is being written, uh, by the parties involved. Mr. Cardenas contacted me, and I told him we would continue it at a date certain. We don't have the date at this time, but it will not be on the schedule for tomorrow. We're going to continue it, and I was asked to give that announcement.
The, the item will still be on the agenda, but tomorrow it will be continued to a date certain, so you're just noting, giving people a heads up that it will be continued.
Exactly. Thank you.
We'll do it then. I know Mr. Weezer and I both are going to adjourn. Why don't you start, Mr. Weezer, for a dear friend that I think many of us will chime in, the death of a, of a great Angeleno, Scott Wilson, founder of Northeast Trees, and I know we have some friends in chambers as well. We really appreciate being here. Uh, Mr. Weezer, if you'd like to begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have Scott Wilson's daughter, Christine Richards, who has joined us today, as well as Aaron Thomas and Samron Sikkend with Northeast Trees, and thank you for being here today. As the council president mentioned, Scott Wilson was definitely a friendly face, not only in northeast Los Angeles, but perhaps the region. Uh, he is a longtime Egerock resident and retired from Egerock High School as a teacher and landscape architect, who was instrumental in the greening of large parts of northeast Los Angeles. He passed away Monday, November 14th, after a fatal fall sustained while cutting flowers from a tree in the garden of his Olson Street home. He was 89. Born in Salem, Oregon, in 1922, Scott had two sisters and a brother in a family that managed a pear orchard and a cemetery. He served in the United States Army during World War II and graduated from Cal Poly Salute Obispo, earning a degree in horticulture in 1950. In 1989, Scott Wilson founded Northeast Trees, a nonprofit environmental group devoted to planting at least five trees a day for the rest of his life, as well as ensuring jobs in the green industry for at-risk youth. Northeast Trees had a kickoff in 1989. They started by planting 700 oaks at Occidental College in Los Angeles. Since then, the group that Scott Wilson created has planted 70,000 trees, including native oaks and sycamores throughout the Los Angeles area. Northeast Trees specializes in bringing together grants and small armies of volunteers to help low-income communities create parks, plant trees along neighborhood streets, and partner with city and county agencies on water harvesting projects, and the organization has also helped create 35 mini-parks, many of them linking communities along the Los Angeles River's concrete channel with hiking trails and bike paths. A dedicated mentor, Scott Wilson, was constantly active and always a presence at tree planting events in Egerock and beyond. Among the numerous trees he credited with, he is credited with planting is a string of oaks about 30 years old in Occidental College. Some 20 years ago, Wilson also planted many of the trees at Langtownstead Avenue today in Egerock. There will be two ceremonies to celebrate his life. The first will be Saturday, November 20th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Women's 20th Century Club at Egerock, located on the corner of Hermosa Avenue and Colorado Boulevard. Century Club at Eagle Rock, located on the corner of Hermosa Avenue and Colorado Boulevard. And Northeast Trees invites everyone to Scott Wilson's Celebration of Life, which will be held on Sunday, January 29th at 3:00 p.m. at Occidental College. Scott is survived by his wife, Clary, son Ron Wilson and his daughter Christine Richards, who's with us today. As was mentioned, he passed away literally doing the thing he loved most, sharing nature and volunteering. He was actually up clipping some flowers and he was preparing those flowers for a church, which was he intended to decorate with those flowers. He was constantly at many, many events and whenever many of us thought about what we can do to an area to preserve nature, to plant more trees, Scott Wilson is certainly the one we first thought of. And he was a kind soul person I learned a lot from in terms of how do we create more open space for our neighborhoods in northeast Los Angeles. He will sorely be missed and we certainly thank him and his family for all the work he did to benefit Los Angeles and to create more open space and to beautify our northeast area.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weezer. And just to add my words as well, I first got to know Scott when I was teaching at Occidental College and walking through those oak trees. And he came to a session that we were having at the Urban Environmental Policy Institute and it was before the 2001 election. So we're looking at a new mayor and he was talking about how important it was to take some of the things that we had been doing in northeast Los Angeles throughout the city. And I think he really influenced really a generation of policymakers that are here. Ms. Perry and I were just with him at the signing of the Low Impact Development Ordinance, which, you know, Northeast Trees has done so many things. People think, oh, just tree planting, which by itself is such a significant and huge act. But you think about how he raised all of our awareness to not only understand that we could unpave streets. The first unpaved street was a vision of his, together with the Propo money that we had, to be able to tear up Oro Street in Legion Valley. And instead of taking dirty stormwater and putting it into the LA River where it would pollute and the ocean where it would pollute, instead it got naturally cleaned back into the aquifers. And the folks that live in that street got a park and they also got better landscaping. It was a classic win-win-win that Scott was known for. You know, I think of him in the same class of folks like Alex Baum, you know, these legendary guys in our city who, long before it's in vogue, long before people are talking about doing green things, he was there not only doing it, but doing it humbly. And I will always remember and truly miss that smile. Scott Wilson's smile lit up a room. And he was the archetype of what you think of as the friendly grandfather for all of us and the city of Los Angeles has lost. A great grandfather, a great man, a great policymaker and a great servant to our city. Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Council President. When I heard about his passing, I was relatively shocked. I had just seen him in the Ad hoc River Committee and he was just smiling. He was just smiling and just absorbing it all. In 1991, I sat with him near Riverside Bridge before the river issue was really becoming a city effort. And he sat there and he talked to me about aquifers and he spoke of what the river does. And then he broke down for me, this whole notion of how we are essentially choking the earth and how we have essentially strapped this beautiful river with cement. We gave it a straitjacket that we're not letting it breathe. And he talked about the trees. And about that time, he was getting a grant, I believe, from the state and working with then-council Mike Hernandez, planting hundreds of trees along the arroyo. And I asked him, why do you see trees there? Because growing up in that neighborhood, it's ingrained in you to look at it just as industrial land, barren land. Sometimes we don't believe we deserve more or better. And he turned that around and he says, why wouldn't you want trees there? Why can't we have our children see what a real tree looks like? Not these lollipops we have all along the city, these real trees. And in the project, Mike was just reminding me of a project in Loretto Grammar School where the city wanted to tear out the trees because they were the problem. And in fact, he showed us how to redo the cement and redesign the cement and actually did brickwork around the trees to let the tree breathe and live. And it wasn't the tree's fault. It was how we were treating trees. So I was so impressed by and informed, he just taught me so much. I didn't know much about him. I didn't know he was a professor. I didn't know he was a World War II veteran. I didn't, I thought he was just an old guy hanging out with a bunch of liberals wanting to put trees up. I just didn't know who he was. So we sat there by the river and we spent almost two hours there. And he just went through this whole process of describing what we need to do for future generations if the city's gonna survive. And when he spoke about the relationship of the water and what it does for us and what the river could do, he planted those seeds for me. He was one of the persons that made me understand that what we're doing to our city is we're not only choking our trees, but we're choking our children and not giving them the ability to breathe with the oxygen it generates. So I am very, very, very honored to have met him and I'm really sorry to have to go.
Tom and then Ms. Perry.
Yeah.
Oh, another one. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Labange.
No, I just wanted to say what a wonderful man to be, 89 and live and do what he did. He truly was a saint on earth. Everyone, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Garcetti spoke so eloquently. But here's a man who had an education and then he went to our schools and was a great teacher. And a great teacher for many, many years at Crenshaw, at Hollywood and at Eagle Rock. And when I met him, I think I was with John Ferraro or with the mayor's office. And I remember asking him early on, what's Northeast Trees? How'd you get the name? What does it mean? And he goes, anything northeast of Catalina Island. And that was the kind of enthusiasm he had. And even in defeat of some things, because not everything always went Scott's way, he just went out and planted trees. If everybody could use the example, and Eric, you were so eloquent, mentioned the great Alex Baum and some other citizens who are just lifelong committed to good projects. If everybody would be a little like Scott Wilson, where they finish their career and volunteer, he created an industry, which thanks, Ed, in your district, and you mentioned Mike earlier, the River Center is the campus of many good things, which northeast has their homes there. All these positive things that go there. This is a man who really loved who he was and what he did. And I remember the first reason I planted with him was on the ramp going off of San Fernando Road, right by the northeast yard for sanitation.
Riverside Drive.
Yeah, right Riverside Drive. And they're big sycamores. So every time, I always have, I pass, I think of Scott, now I'll think of him more with love. Because when you plant a tree, Mitch, you plant a tree, the roots go deep and they stay there long past our time. God bless Scott Wilson.
Thank you, indeed. Ms. Perry for another adjourning motion.
Not an adjourning motion. I just wanted to miss say one thing after we were done with the adjourning motions.
Okay, Mr. Labange, do you have another adjourning motion?
If I could.
Yes, please, go ahead. And then Ms.
Thank you very much.
We'll work our way down.
Gene Cassanessa was a great filmmaker. In Hollywood, he passed away at 80 years old. He was a sound mixer for many films, including Star Trek III, The Search for Spock. He won Academy Awards for Best Sound in E.T. Extraterrestrial. Was nominated for six more in the same category, included The Candidate, Young France, Frankenstein, et cetera, et cetera. His motto was, "Life is good." And he loved and lived life to the fullest. He's survived by his loving wife Sandra and their children, Stephen, Gene and granddaughter Jeffrey and Maddie. Gene Cassanessa was a wonderful individual who was loved by those in his industry. I ask we adjourn in memory of Gene. And also, Mr. Garcetti, I think, and I don't know if I was out or in when this happened here, but do we adjourn in memory of Dorothy Rodham?
No, I don't believe we did.
I just think there's nobody like Hillary Clinton. And Hillary Clinton is as great as she is because of her mother. And Dorothy Rodham was in Los Angeles just recently when they had a celebration of the Clinton Foundation at a event at Hollywood Bowl. And there she was with her daughter and her granddaughter and the president and enjoyed it. And the life of her really tells us how fortunate we have to have our Secretary of State and how she was so encouraging as a mother. She was born in 1919 in Chicago and she leaves behind many friends here in California, Little Rock and Washington. President Obama called her a remarkable and strongly determined and gifted person. She's a daughter of a Chicago firefighter and just a much special person, as you know. So I think as a council, all of us should adjourn unanimously on behalf of Dorothy Rodham.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
President, add to adjourning motion. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Davenport Jr., born August 1955 in Phoenix, Arizona, died recently October 31st, 2011. Jack and his family moved to Los Angeles in 58. After graduating from Crenshaw High School in '73, he joined the U.S. Army and was honorably discharged from the 87th Airborne Rangers in 1976. In '76, he also joined the Los Angeles Police Department, where he retired as a sergeant after 26 years as both a training officer and a motor officer. His family, Jack Jr. and Senior, were long-term owners of Jack's restaurant on Western Avenue, right at Keen Boulevard. He survived by his mother, father, Betty and Jack, and a host of other relatives. His services will be held November 16th. The viewing will be November 16, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the service will be held November 17th, 11:30 at Todd's Martryary in Pomona. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Stefan St. Joseph Thomas, who died of an undetermined cause, October 31st, at the age of 23. Stefan was a standout defensive linebacker on the Narco High School 2005 championship team. He was selected in 2005 as the Division Five Defensive Play of the Year. He set a school's single-season record for 155 tackles. Stefan went on to become an all-region selection at Chaffee College before signing a letter of intent to play at Northern Arizona University. He captained the Lumberjacks in 2009 and was selected Second Team All Big Sky Conference. Stefan graduated from North Arizona University in 2010 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. To further his education, he was pursuing a master's degree at Azusa Pacific. He recently accepted the position as the linebacker coach at Chaffee College, where he coached the Panthers through 2011. He survived by his parents, Stefan and Kathy Thomas, three sisters and a host of other family members. His services were held November 12th in Narco, California.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. These are thoughts that come from Chief of Staff Jose Garde and myself in adjourning the motion for Tom Morales. Earlier this month, we lost a good man, Tom Morales. Tom was a good husband, a good dad, a good family man, and to the end, a tremendously good fighter for his neighborhood. Tom was not just a lifelong resident of Angelino Heights, but a true believer in the neighborhood of Angelino Heights, its history, its restorative opportunities and ultimately its soul. Tom was there in the beginning when the city undertook this great experiment known as Historic Preservation Overlay Zones. He was then working with John Ferraro, the great councilman of that district. This is back in the 60s and 70s, I believe.
Seventies.
The 70s. But today, we know HPOZ is not as experiments, but as real and effective land use tools to repair and restore our neighborhoods. In Angelino Heights, Tom's vision became a reality. Tom understood that we could rebuild neighborhoods, historic houses by historic house. He also believed in rebuilding our neighborhoods by helping people. For Tom, restoring a house also meant building his people. Today, if you drive around the Angelino Heights neighborhood or see on some television show, you will see the results of not only Tom's advocacy, but also, as Tom would remind everyone, many other local neighborhood leaders from the past and present that also believe in the power of neighborhoods. When people pass, they are remembered in different ways. But Tom, I believe people will think of him when you drive down Carroll Avenue and observe the intricate woodwork of a Saint Anne, when they walk along Kensington Road and admire the elegant paintwork of Restored Victorian. Tom was a cathedral fandom, also USC Trojan graduate. But more importantly, he was a person who understood the relevance of people's spirits and highly invest in their, not only their house, but in their neighborhoods. And he shared it. He shared it regardless of language you spoke, the color of your skin, your religion. For him, it was about a neighborhood. And Angelino Heights is much stronger for that. Angelino Heights is a better neighborhood today because of Tom Morales.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to join with you, Ed, on that. And we have great jobs, but those who are staff have greater jobs because you get to really meet people. And I got to meet Tom working for John. And he fought and fought hard for the first HPOZ, the first HPOZ. And then he fought and fought to get the lines buried on Carroll Avenue for the telephone lines and others. And it transformed a neighborhood. It really transformed a neighborhood. He has a wonderful family. Ed and I were at the funeral mass at Holy Family in South Pasadena. And his brother talked in his eulogy about how they used to live right where LA Unified used to be on Hill Street and how they'd play on the hill and transform their lives as they did. It was a beautiful service for a beautiful man. And I join in adjourning in memory of Tom Morales.
But Tommy, you bring up a good point and I want to emphasize this. Our staff, over the years, we get to learn about these amazing heroes.
Right.
The folks that are behind the scenes. And the reason why I bring up Jose's name is because in working 20 years with him, we get to see it.
Right.
We get to live it. We get to see the families grow, the children grow, but more importantly, how these neighborhoods transform. And so I just want to just emphasize that point because as a staff person, you were working in that area for 20 years?
I did the HPOZ, the first one.
The first one.
And the second was Melrose Hill. And I love going down Carroll Avenue because you start the tour by saying, here's the Morales family and here's where the Thornbergs live and here's where the Moret family and all these families live there who stayed there. And some of the homes even came from Jan's district in Bunker Hill that have transformed that area. Very special man, Tom Morales.
Thank you, very much. Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, councilmembers, I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Harry Pachon. Harry Pachon was the son of Colombian immigrants and he was born June 4th, 1945 in Miami, but spent much of his youth in Colombia. When he was 16, he returned to the United States and lived with a brother in Montebello, where he finished high school. Harry worked out jobs while attending Cal State Los Angeles, where he received a bachelor's degree in 1967 and a master's in 1968, both in political science. In 1973, he earned a doctorate in government from Claremont Graduate University with a dissertation on ethnic political mobilization in East Los Angeles. Harry was a professor of public policy at USC and joined the Tomas Rivera Policy Institute in 1993 as its president. He served in that position until he retired from the post at the end of 2010. Under his leadership, the institute became the nation's premier think tank on policy issues relevant to Latinos. In 1997, Dr. Pachon was appointed to serve as a member of the President's Advisory Commission on Educational Excellence for Latinos. Additionally, saluting his ongoing work on behalf of Mexicans living in the United States, the Mexican government presented Dr. Pachon with the OTLE Award. OTLE means humanitarian. Before joining the institute, Dr. Pachon spent 15 years in Washington. In the late 1970s, he was chief of staff to Edward Roybaugh, the Los Angeles Democrat and pioneering Latino lawmaker, while he served in Congress. Dr. Pachon was a founding board member and past executive director of the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials, known as NALEO. While at NALEO, he initiated a nationally acclaimed U.S. citizenship project that has been replicated on a multi-ethnic basis across the country and initiated the National Directory of Latino Elected Officials, which is now in its 17th year of publication. Dr. Pachon authored over 20 articles and journals and co-authored three books on U.S. Latino politics and political behavior. He held academic positions at Michigan State University, Loyola Marymount University, City University of New York and held the Kenan All-Campus Chair at the Claremont Colleges. His last teaching job before his passing was as a professor of public policy at the University of Southern California and the School of Public Policy Planning and Development. Services and burial were held on Friday, November 11th at Forest Lawn, Martryery and Church in Covina, California.
in Covina, California. He is survived by his wife, Barbara, daughter Melissa, sons Nicholas and Andrew, and four grandchildren. Because Dr. Jap Pachon loves students and teaching and giving all students the opportunity for a higher-quality education, the Pachon family requests that donations and gifts in honor of Dr. Pachon's life and legacy be given to student scholarships being established in his name at USC. People can contact USC to get more information about this. And having known Dr. Pachon, I was on the Board of Education, he worked with us a number of initiatives to not only benefit Latino students, which was the institute he worked with's focus, but also he was someone who was really passionate that the idea that education can change a person's life. And it showed throughout the years of work that he did. A real gentleman that pursued everything he did in the public's interest, and he surely will be missed.
Thank you. Very well put. Mr. Wezar and Dr. Pachon was a great leader of our community, somebody who also had always a good piece of advice for those who were politicos. He would always tell us, policy-wise and politically-wise, how to keep what's important on the forefront of our minds. One final adjourning motion, colleagues. I ask that we adjourn for Robert Herzog, whom Mr. Laban and I will join together, who passed away yesterday. He was born 1940 in Silver Lake, California, attended local schools, including Hollywood High School and USC. But under his guidance, the History Collective recorded dozens of oral histories and acquired photos and documents of importance to the history of Silver Lake. And we know in this city, it's the collection of villages. It takes individuals like this to make sure we don't forget some of those village histories. And through his tireless efforts, the Doheny Library at SC has become the custodian of the Silver Lake History Collective archives, adding them to their permanent collection, making the archive readily available to future scholars and documentarians. He was a Silver Lake native and longtime resident. His kindness, his charm, his love of community will be greatly, greatly missed. As he once said before he passed, "I love this community and my home, where I've lived for the past 35 years. It's a great pleasure to work with my neighbors in preserving the culture and history of our neighborhood." May that be said for all of us one day. Robert Herzog, Mr. Laban and I. Yes, and announcement, Ms. Perry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Now that we're done with the adjourning motions?
Yeah, if you'd like to say something.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify for the record, when I took the chair, I said that, you know, I had retired. I have merely retired from my position as pro tempore, not from my city council seat.